Okay, we're good to go.
All right. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to this planning commission meeting on the Centerville City Planning Commission. We will start with the determination letter. In accordance with Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh seven subsection four of the Utah Open and Public Meeting Act, I have determined that conducting an electronic meeting of the Centerville Planning Commission with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. This determination is based on the facts and circumstances surrounding the COVID nineteen pandemic. And thank you, Mackenzie. And with that, let us proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. I have asked there was some. Yeah, for some confusion, I think, but I've asked Commissioner Care to share a legislative thought or prayer. So we'll turn the time over to him. Here we have to say, go ahead.
So the thought I have to share is more abstract, maybe than than some others in the past. But it was something that I had run across recently, and I thought it was worth sharing because it opened my eyes a little bit to how our civilization could be viewed. So these are called pace layers. I've asked Mackenzie to share her screen, and thank you, Mackenzie, for for doing that for me. This is a paradigm of of healthy systems and of healthy civilizations. It was coined by a writer named Stuart Brand in nineteen, in the late nineties. He wrote a book called The Clock of the Long Now. And in that, he talks about viewing civilizations, especially healthy ones, using this six-layer system. And it can be updated, obviously. And in fact, I would suggest that it's more applicable if you change the top layer to the civilization's fashion, art, and technology because of how rapid technology proceeds. It proceeds at its own very rapid pace. It's very turbulent. And it can be analogized, this this system can be analogized something to like Jupiter. You guys may remember from just schooling Jupiter has different layers of clouds, and at the surface, they're very, very turbulent. Well, fashion, art, and technology is very turbulent. Every season, we hear, okay, what are the new colors? Where is the hemline going to be? What's the newest gadget that's going to come out? And yet, underlying all of the visible signs of culture and civilization, which are fashion, art, technology, and other things, under underlying that are other layers of a civilization, including commerce. Commerce is a very rapid layer, but not nearly as rapid nor as seasonal, I guess, is probably a better word for it than fashion, art, or technology is. But it drives fashion and art, and fashion art in turn has some driving influence on commerce, but maybe not as much. The same goes as you go down the layers. Infrastructure represents things like utilities and roads and it could be included things like Utopia, you know, fiber networks, methods of communication of of transiting between and through a civilization. Underlying that is governance, and this is why I sort of wanted to share this thought because I think we can draw some parallels to what we do as planning commissioners. Underlying the infrastructure of civilization is the governance of how that civilization goes about its business. And as the small wheel in the cog of governance, we have a part to play there. But governance comes about in part because of the culture. Each culture gives rise to a slightly different form of government. And then limiting that underneath it and moving at a much more glacial pace is nature itself, the nature of what we are as human beings, and also just the nature of where we live, of what's around us, just the physical geography of where we are. Now, the reason I bring this up is because the the writer that coined this phrase did so, and then he started to analyze how a culture or how well a healthy culture can absorb shocks, how well they can absorb change. And we've seen this year and last year, some significant shocks to the system, shocks that have changed a lot of the surface level of of our of our fashion, art, and technology, and and also our commerce. We've seen significantly how lockdowns have changed the way we do business and our infrastructure and our governance. And very slowly, it changes our culture. And as we look at each of these different layers and how each of them are absorbed, able to absorb their change, it opens my eyes to see how the recent events are going to affect us not only now, but far into the future. So that's the general. Now, the parallels that I'd like to draw as planning commissioners is that we are here, and when we take a look at things that are just immediately in front of us, we're only looking at the very, very first layer. And sometimes it's helpful for me in my position to, as a planning commissioner, to remind myself that there's a long view, there's a long now to keep in mind, that as we govern, we are going to affect the infrastructure of the city, because as each of the applicants come in, we're changing the way that that portion of the city will be communicating, will be transiting, will be interfacing with other components in our city, and we're changing the way commerce proceeds in the city. And at the most visible level, we're changing the look of the city. And it's all informed by the culture of who we are and what we are. So as we remember those things, I think it helps informs our decisions because we're going to be making changes as planning commissioners by proposing ordinances or by authorizing a land use that's going to be running with the land. And it will be there for decades to come. And as we do so, I think that it's helpful to me to keep that perspective that these decisions are important. And I just feel grateful that I'm able to do that and be part of this. So that's my thought. And I'll offer a quick prayer. Father in heaven, we're very grateful for the blessings that thou hast given us. We're grateful for the opportunity to meet as a governing body, to deliberate on the decisions that are in front of us. We're grateful for the guidance we receive, and we ask for additional guidance in the future and say this in the name of Jesus Christ to men.
Thank you, Mason. It was a interesting, it's an interesting way to think about things. So. All right, let's move along. We have a full agenda tonight, including four public hearings. So one of the things that I will mention really quickly as we get started, if if we have any members of the public who are going to are planning on speaking a little bit later, when it's their turn, we will use the, we utilize the raise hand feature within Zoom to identify those people who would like to speak. That will help us to hopefully in a more efficient manner, manner, go through anybody who does and does not want to to provide any public input. So if you're not sure how to do that, you've got some time right now to figure out how that works. So let's go ahead and move along with the Zone Map Amendment for the pasture business park phase three. Turn the time over to staff.
Hey, thank you, Chair Daly and members of the commission. So this first item is directly tied to the second item. So I will reference both. So the salmon HVAC, the applicants with salmon HVAC purchased a parcel of land, and I realized I didn't share it in the packet. So I'm going to see if I can pull that up right now, just a moment. Okay, there we go. So it's this in the bottom corner, this piece in red is parcel zero six zero zero three zero zero four seven. It was purchased from you dot. It is currently unzoned. So there are there's not much land within the city that is unzoned, but almost all of it coincides with Legacy Parkway. So it doesn't currently have a zone. The salmons purchased it and would like to add it to their current parcels, their current business park in order to even build on it. It needs to be zoned into the Shorelands Commerce Park. And the only item staff would like to bring up is that just you can see it just below this. There's a squiggly line. And that is Barnard Bernard Creek, and it is a wetland mitigated or restricted by the Army Corps of Engineers. And with the addition of this land, that kind of changes the previous approval received in two thousand and eleven from the Army Corps of Engineers. It doesn't necessarily have any bearing on the rezone, but it will have future bearing on future applications, future building permits, any work that happens, any grading that happens in this area. So staff recommends that it is rezoned because it is harmonious with what is currently happening adjacent to it. It's right next to Legacy Parkway. There's not really anything going to happen on that side of this parcel. And there is sufficient utilities and services to cover this point one nine acres. If you have any questions, I am free to answer them.
Great. I do not have any questions. Does anybody else on the commission have some questions for staff? Because you did such a great job, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
So let's turn the time over to the applicant. If the applicant would like to unmute the video, if they'd like to, can and discuss any of the pertinent items in the staff report or anything that staff has talked about and let us know if there's anything else we need to know. If you can identify yourself, please.
I'm Craig Salmon with Salmon HVAC. I'm not sure what questions you have. We're out of the wetlands, you know, zones are planned, and we're also close to it, but we're also close to the Davis County flood ditch area there. And we've been in contact with them, and we have to get approval from them before we build any building too. So the city staff has instructed us to get letters of approval from those people before they would give us a building permit. So anyway, we're working through that right now.
Thank you. Does anybody have any, do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so you said that you're not in the wetlands and the proposal that we're going to be talking about in a minute, it's not going to be in it, and you don't have any any limitations from the Army Corps of Engineers that would prohibit you from I guess I shouldn't ask that until the next one, I guess. But you're within your guidelines of being able to utilize the property how you see fit in the future, knowing that you have the the wetlands on the property.
Yeah, that's right. We understand we have, we have wetlands on the property, but the building itself is not going to be in the wetlands. And so that's, that's a plan. And then unless they come up with some, you know, something that rules that we got to be a certain distance from it or something like that, then we'll we'll adjust the building to fit there, whatever they require us to do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, so this matter has been scheduled for a public hearing. We'll go ahead at this time and and open it up to the public if anybody would like to speak to this issue. As I said before, go ahead and raise your hand within Zoom if you would like to speak. You can dial the phone number if you are not participating via the app or the web. So we'll give you a couple minutes to do that. All right. I don't see anybody raising their hand, and I don't see anybody joining us via the phone. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the time back over to the planning commission for any further questions, comments, or discussion. All right, we're talking to a group tonight. That's great. Yeah, I'm ready for a motion. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll I'll make the motion. I hereby hereby make a motion for the planning commission to recommend approval of the Zone Map Amendment for parcel zero six dash zero zero three dash zero zero four, as depicted in this middle dated April first two thousand and twenty-one, and as presented to the city to Shorelands Commerce Park with the reasons following in the staff report A and through C.
I will second that motion.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on on the motion? Okay, then we will start with Commissioner Wilcox.
Hi.
Commissioner Care.
Hi.
Commissioner Wright.
Hi.
Commissioner Hayman.
Hi.
Commissioner Summer Hayes.
Hi.
Commissioner Shagrood.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. All right. Let's move along to the next one related as well, a conceptual site plan for the pasture business pasture business park phase three. Back to Mackenzie.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Daly. Oh, sorry. So this item, again, connected to the previous item, I wanted to make a note. So the reason will go before the city council in May. And I recommend the final site plan when it comes through before you to make the that approval conditional upon the rezone approved by the city council. I don't imagine there will be a problem at the city council, but I just think it's a good idea to tie them together. So this item with the purchase of the previously mentioned parcel plus some changes previously to their three-phase approach of the pasture business park. Simon HVAC came and has provided some new site plan with a building that would cover part of this new parcel. And let's see, I wrote a few notes. In my staff report, I again just wanted to condition this conceptual site plan upon the Army Corps of Engineers or Davis County flood plains approval of any buildings in this area. And then I went back and redid my staff report and missed one thing. The applicant did provide their building heights, and the building heights provided in the site plan is twenty-eight feet, which is less than the allowed thirty-five feet. So they are in compliance with that item. Since it's in the shoreline commerce park, there is design guidelines and a color palette. Tan and brown are in that color palette. It is a very natural, neutral color palette. And then there was no signage or lighting presented in this conceptual site plan application. But staff feels it is one of those things that can be viewed at the final site plan process. That is all I have to say on this one.
Great. Thank you, Mackenzie. Does anybody have any questions for staff on this? All right, then, let's go ahead and move along to the applicant and invite the applicant to add anything else that might be pertinent to the conceptual site plan portion of this application. Is there anything you'd like to to add?
Well, one thing we'd probably add is the architectural look and colors all match the existing buildings that we built there in one and two. So I think I think everything we tried to meet all the shoreline design criteria, and we think we have. So anyway, that's it.
Great, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the applicant? No. All right. Thank you very much. So at this time, this has been scheduled for a public hearing as well, and we go ahead and invite the public to write their input on the conceptual site plan for this. Go ahead and raise your hand, or you can call in if you'd like. Give it just a second to do that. If anybody would like to speak. All right, I don't see anybody rushing to the virtual microphone. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Back to the commission. Any other thoughts, comments, concerns, discussion?
I think a good use of the land, given the fact that we've had a successful phase one and two of this or building one and two, whatever. And that that area is is fairly well utilized. I think this, you know, is a great addition.
Yeah. It's a good comment. Becky, I I can echo that. I think this is, I think that's part of the reason why there's maybe not a whole lot of discussion among us is that, you know, at least for me, I don't there's nothing to argue with, in my opinion. So unless anybody else has any other comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll try the motion. I've never done one. So let me so. So I hereby make a motion to approve the consensual site plan for the pasture business park phase three and approximately twelve thirty north thirteen hundred west with the following directives, directives, one through five. They do that. Okay.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. Do you have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Spencer. All right, any further discussion on the motion? No? Okay, then we will start with Commissioner Shagrood.
Hi.
Commissioner Summer Hayes.
Hi.
Commissioner Hayman. Commissioner Wright.
Hi.
Commissioner Care.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. So. All right. Thank you, everybody, for that one. That was pretty quick and efficient. Let's move along to the next item on our agenda, which has also been scheduled for a public hearing. This is the Summer Hill Lane preliminary subdivision, and we'll turn time over to looks like Corey.
Thank you, Chair Daly, members of the commission. I'm not sure that I'm quite as efficient as Mackenzie, so I'll apologize upfront to you and see, see where we end up. As you indicated, this is a preliminary subdivision, so I'll just quickly hopefully share a screen. Is that even coming up? I don't know if you can see.
Oh, it was there, but now it disappeared.
Disappeared. Let me bring it back. Is it there?
Yes.
Okay, so you should be familiar that this is a summer hill lane subdivision is you've seen this previously in a conceptual slash plan development area approval. The planning commission reviewed that conceptual subdivision along with a rezone to the plan development overlay. And it contains sixty-three lots. One of the primary reasons for the PDO, there's probably a few other ones, but the primary reason was to ensure that the property developed its infrastructure as one subdivision. And so that drove the that approval through the planning commission as well as to the city council and was adopted. So we are at the second step. The second step is the preliminary subdivision review. And then there'll also be a third step that will go to if if this advances, it would go to the final subdivision, which the commission will also see and then make a recommendation to the city council. So in short, your preliminary review stays at this level. And we are now seeing the preliminary construction drawings and the preliminary details beyond the conceptual building, the paperwork and the layout and the construction plans for an actual development. So we're at that preliminary stage. I have a few items to address with you, but I think the major focus outside of of the development of the property as a whole, it came up driving that stormwater management drainage utility management. And there were lots of public questions. There's also some other further complications, not in engineering, but it changes the nature of the drainage pattern in the area because you're familiar with the West Davis corridor coming on board. It will relocate the frontage road. This does affect this piece of property with that relocation of the frontage road. And so what I've done is I've invited Kevin Campbell, our city engineer, just to briefly address you of his review of this, the drainage in the in the stormwater, and maybe just explain to you a little bit more detail and expertise that carries much more weight than myself on what they've designed into the plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Campbell, if that's okay, Chair Daly. And then when he's finished, you can ask him questions. And then when we conclude that discussion, I'll move on to the three or four items I have left.
Sounds great. Thanks, Corey.
Okay, can you hear me all right? Yeah, okay, great. Mackenzie, if you wouldn't mind sharing that first slide that this is a an exhibit out of our drainage master plan. I wanted to show this just to educate the group a little bit on drainage areas. So we have twenty some odd drainage areas in the city. This this shows the three kind of northeast drainage areas of the city from oh, from about Greenfields PUD over to Lund Lane and up to the the Freedom Hills Park. And just really briefly, I wanted to let you know that we are getting some major drainage improvements for these areas due to the West Davis corridor. So we're getting a new thirty-six inch diameter pipe underneath Lund Lane that goes beneath the frontage road and I fifteen and Legacy Highway. We're getting a new thirty-six inch that replaces an old twenty-four inch at the, let's see, it's going to be the northwest corner of the Summer Hill Lane subdivision. And we're getting a new thirty-six inch culvert that replaces a twenty-four at Lexington Park. So those are three of the four major drainage improvements for for this region. On the map, you can maybe kind of notice Ricks Creek is just south of these three areas. That's a major stream channel. If that were to flood or overflow, that would overflow to the south and go down to the the city park area. And there's other drainage systems there that can handle it. So probably your main concern for this area back in eighty-three, eighty-four Lone Pine Creek, which is down Lund Lane, there was some flooding in that area. But the rest of the systems are just local city storm drainage systems that pick up subdivision water and as many of you know, our main kind of our main source of concern is typically frontage road and I fifteen. It acts as a dyke for the city and it backs water up. So typically, well, back in the major events, that's where the flooding has occurred is is at I fifteen, just east of I fifteen in the frontage road. Maybe if you'd flip to the next slide, the second sheet. So I kind of wanted to give a more higher level view of the drainage area and and then show the drainage that's been considered for the subdivision. Maybe go to the next sheet on that plan, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. So when we look at subdivision design, we have requirements that the the developer keep all of the city runoff in the city right of way. So of course, the city owns from back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk typically. So our requirements make it so that no city water can go on to private property. That seems very basic, but that's an important aspect. that's an important aspect of the subdivision design. Ideally, most of the lots slope to the city street so that your hard surfaces, your roofs, your driveways, hopefully, most of that runoff is coming to the city street into the city drainage system and, and down across the freeway. That's the ideal world. Now, we know that lots cannot always be graded so that they drain to the city street off of the frontage. So oftentimes, we have to design what we call kind of more minor ancillary drainage systems in, in backyards. So the developer has proposed in these backyards to put inlet boxes with pipes that would, and then this is my, more kind of the micro view of each lot. Each lot will have an inlet box. These are privately owned and maintained. And this is more of a neighbor-to-neighbor system to keep people from draining onto their neighbor. That's also a city requirement. So that, that's kind of my brief summary of that. That's how we look at these subdivisions. Again, we don't want city water getting onto private property, and we want private property owners to keep their water on their own property or, or drain it to the streets. So I feel like they've done a pretty good job of, of designing the drainage system. I think that most of the concerns are probably neighbor-to-neighbor water. So they're, they're spending the extra money to put these inlet boxes in backyards and, and get those backyards eventually out to city streets. Are there any questions?
I've got a question, Kevin. So you're saying they're privately owned, privately maintained? So if there's an issue with a backup, or they've got grass clippings or leaves, that's their responsibility to maintain it. Is that accurate?
Most likely, an HOA would be formed. I believe that's the case. Cory can correct me, but the HOA would be responsible to keep those clean. Yes.
Okay, and then the second follow-up question is, is it a true closed, for lack of a better word, closed pipe system, or is it more of like a land drain system where it's a clay seeping system into, infiltrates into the, into the soil as opposed to being a, you know, PVC or other type of concrete pipe?
The backyard system is a closed system with an inlet at the low spot of each lot. There also is a subdrain system out in the city street that is perforated, that is city-owned. It's a solid pipe that we have them drill holes in. And there's a lateral that's stubbed to each lot so that they can rub it, run it around their basement, their footings. So there's two separate systems. There's a subdrain system. The city only owns that to the back of the sidewalk again. But that subdrain system will lower the groundwater table significantly in this area. Because, you know, it'll probably be eight, ten feet deep, so it'll lower the groundwater table oh, four to five feet would be my guess.
Thank you.
Are there going to need to be any additional, like sump pump systems that homeowners, homeowners would need to put in, or do you think that this system that they're putting in on each property would prevent any kind of additional issue like that?
Great question. We design the subdrain system so that it is what we call gravity flow. We do not allow sump pumps that pump up into the subdrain system. We require that the lowest finished floor elevation be a foot above where the subdrain system ties into the storm drain, so that if that storm drain backs up, it will not back up into the basements. So, no, there will be no sumps. This drainage system along the backyards will also be gravity feed. Pumps just become a problem and an issue when the pumps go out or the power goes out. So we, we don't allow them by ordinance.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. Anybody else have any more questions for Kevin? Okay. Thanks, Kevin. That was very helpful to understand that more technical side of things. So back to Cory.
Thank you, Chair Daly. Just a few notes that I've written for the subdivision review, just to be mindful of. A lot of these are kind of standard position, standard codes and ordinances. I don't see a significant problem with them, but I do have one little discussion about remnant property. So just a summary of my staff report, I call out the buildable area. This is the area inside the setbacks, so it's, it's, you have the lot boundaries. Then you have the setbacks and easements, and then you have the area left for the home and other improvements. Where ordinance requires at least a minimum of two thousand square feet. I think most of the lots will comply with that. Part of the reason I bring it up is a little bit of a concern is we do have some adjusted small lots, because this is a distribution of lot sizes throughout the project. There's some smaller ones to the west, there's larger ones to the east. And I just want to make sure that all of those smaller lots meet that minimum two thousand square foot build area for a home. They don't have to use all two thousand square feet, or they could use all two thousand square feet. It's up to them, but at least we have that minimum amount. The other thing I bring up is the lot utility easements. We typically require ten feet along the frontages of a public street. Then you have two other easements that are required, one on one of the sides and one on the rear yard, and that is typically seven feet. Those are often go unused. They're kind of a generic utility, these interior lot lines in the rear yards, but sometimes they're needed to go through, so we've kept that standard in place. We primarily use the street frontage, but occasionally we have to go lot to lot. So that's what those interior and rear yard easements are designed for. But I did note in the staff report, it under the PDO, we adjusted the setbacks. And so some of the lots only have a six-foot setback to the home, and so that changes the nature. So we just need to adjust one of those interior lot lines under the PDO to, and those particular lots that are six-foot, reduce it to a six-foot easement. So you'll see ten-foot easements, some six-foot easements, some seven-foot easements. And I just bring that up in the staff report so that we see that in the final design plans. Utility providers, we got overly focused at staff. This is a little short-sighted on our part. We did not look at all of the utility providers because we did not have all the utility providers, and I failed to call out some of the utility providers. We got focused on Weber Basin during this whole process because of, of the pressure of the secondary system and the, and the delivery of that secondary water. As you know, the city requires secondary water connections. And so I just bring up that there are some utility provider sheets that they need to make sure that they contact those utilities. Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion, and others to make sure that they, we believe they have the capacity. We just need verification of those utilities. And they have a right to see in a subdivision, an opportunity, what's coming in the planning of the city before it records. So I bring those utility provider sheets up. Weber Basin is particular to note. They are delivering, they have the adequate shares to the development. The infrastructure into the system is, is, is a little bit taxed. I may be saying that too strong of a word, but we've noticed some pressure and some ability for the secondary water to be available by pressure. It's available by mount, but it's the available pressures is what Weber Basin is working on. If you read their letter, they understand lots, a certain size or less. They're expecting that there'll be shared landscaping between the formal turf grass and then some drought tolerant plantings, and they have a cap limit as well as the larger lots. And they have submitted that letter and want that plat note in the subdivision as a secondary service provider. So I call that out. Just some notations on the plat, since it's a PDO. We just need to note on the plat that it is a PDO and you're subject to that PDO approval. So that's a forewarned to any future purchaser that they are buying into a subdivision that's untraditional to some extent, and they have to comply with whatever the rules are in that un-traditional approval. Again, the lot utilities needs need to be shown. Setbacks, I think that's important. We have a variation degree of setbacks. If you look on a, on a, I think it's the, the third sheet of their submittal. They list all the unique setbacks, and they're varying in, in different degrees based on the amount of land area for the lot. We need to make sure those get called out on the subdivision plat. And that's going to be the trigger and check for not only property owners buying it, but also for city staff going to the plat and, and looking at the setbacks and making sure that anybody builds a home complies with those setbacks. One unique thing that came up during this process, I, you may be aware, we may have talked on it lightly. You have a couple of knuckles in the main street, and the concern that the Public Works Department had on those knuckles is the placement of driveways, because that becomes the competing area for snow storage. And so you, if you look on the preliminary construction plans, they've committed to where those driveways are and shown where the snow storage areas would be. We just need to reflect the driveway location on the future plat so that the future owner knows that that's the, those particular lots, if you're purchasing them, that's your driveway location and width. So I think that's important. Street names and addressing is done by the Public Works Director, so I just call that out so that they make sure they get the approved street names and addresses of the lots, correct east and west sides, odds and evens, so forth. And then we have some standard plat notes that are just city specifications. A lot of those are disclaimers in the sense that any, any soils that are on the property is part of the building permit process to verify the soils, like the compaction and the quality of the soils to take care of the foundation. So we just need that note on the plat. The last real, well, second to last item, I, we addressed during the PDO approval, remnant properties. As you know, we do have a homeowners association involved in this. They'll be taking care of some of the detention area, although it's reduced in size as, as our city engineer called out. We have some land drains. And this one will have an HOA attached with it to manage those facilities. The one that's a question of staff is at four hundred west, at the intersection of the New Street and four hundred west in the southeast corner. I think you, there's no remnant technically shown on the plat. It's a part of one of the lots, but you can see it has a funky shape carrying that lot out to the intersection. There's been ongoing discussions with the adjacent lot owner to the south to maybe potentially acquire that property. But that discussion and determination has not fruited to something as of yet. So it's shown in the corporation on the east lot of that intersection. Just a little bit worried about the usability of that corner. There's some of it that the lot owner currently platted at could use just on the west side of their lot line. But as it extends further towards the corner, it becomes a really unusable area due to setbacks and so forth, as well as site triangles and putting structures and so forth at that intersection. So I just raised that as an issue that usability, visual, whether it's going to the lot owner to the south, I've had a conversation with that lot owner, but again, the resolution hasn't taken place. I believe it's the fowers that have been in that discussion. So we just need, what symphony comes back with the final plans? Are they dedicating it to the lot owner? What's their plans with that property in its final form? So I bring that up because we technically don't want properties just sitting there unused. And then the issue of taking care of it and maintenance of it. The last one. The last one is the continued dispute between some adjacent landowner to the north. I believe it's the Packers as well as the Symphony homeowners. There's an ongoing dispute with whether there is some type of easement. I was asked by the attorney for the Packers, and so to, to provide a letter to you. So when you go to the public hearing, the ask is, is that attached letter that I provided to you in your packet? And if you look up the updated, you'll see the letter from the Packers attorney, the requesting that be in the record of, of the public hearing as well as the applicant has provided a documentation outlining all the submittals and documents that they believe are related to their subdivision. They would like that entered into the record as part of that public hearing. The position of staff, and you're welcome to talk to our city attorney for some legal advice to you. But our position at staff is this is a private dispute. This is not, the subdivision rules and regulations from our vantage point do not resolve a private dispute. And again, Lisa can expound on that more. Just by way of background, I know the commission weighed a little bit into this on the PDO plan. There was a condition thirteen assigned in that PDO approval. Just for your information, so that you know, when it ended up at the council, condition number thirteen of the PDO was eliminated by the city council. And so the idea of providing an access as condition thirteen originally called out has been eliminated in the PDO approval. With that, I'm ready for questions, or if you need further understanding from Lisa Romney, our city attorney. I hope she will chime in.
So Cory and maybe Lisa, I guess, along the lines of that last issue with the legal dispute, obviously, we can enter the written comments as a public, public comment for the meeting, but other than that, you know, really, as a planning commission, what, what are we expected to do or not expected to do? You know, is this something that we? Do we hold this up or do, and let the private parties deal with it? Or is it outside of that, and we just continue with what we're doing, and, and that would be handled completely separately? So help me understand, to what extent do we need to to weigh this or not?
And I'm happy to, to address that. As Cory has stated, I think it's my position that this is a private dispute. We've been saying that from the beginning. And the planning commission did recommend, you know, providing a twelve-foot access, but the council eliminated that with the PDO, which in my opinion was probably our best place from a legal standpoint, given our ordinances, because that was a legislative decision. But at this point, we're really at the administrative decision, and it's, it's my opinion that, that these are legal arguments that they have an easement, and it's a disputed easement. It's not an easement of record. And so I, I think that the planning commission should focus on the conditions of approval in the preliminary plat ordinance. And if, if the subdivision complies with that, you can, you can approve it. Sorry, this is not a recommendation and a planning commission. Obviously, I think both sides can speak to this tonight. There's differing opinions as to whether the easement exists, as to whether the plat complies with the preliminary plat ordinance. But that's my position that the planning commission can move forward with a recommendation of approval.
Thanks, Lisa.
I have a question for Lisa. Is this a time for that?
Yeah, it is. Go ahead.
So Lisa, one of my biggest concerns with the, the application or as it stands is this land drain system. Are we authorized at this stage to require as a condition of approval that an HOA take responsibility for that? Or is that, is that beyond what we can ask for right now?
Our, our ordinances may already require that, but maybe Cory or Kevin can speak to that. But yeah, we, we only take, well, if it's the subdrain system, we only allow that in the public right-of-way. If it's going to be the city, we don't take care of things in people's backyards anymore. It's very hard access, so I'm not opposed to that kind of condition. That's the recommendation from our city engineer. I believe that's really what our ordinances expect, so I'm okay with that condition.
So long as I have some reassurance that it's going to be required, I'm, I'm fine with it. My, my concern, and this is just speaking to the, the panel as a whole, is that fifty years from now, when there's a problem, if we don't have clarity now. if we don't have clarity now about who's responsible to be maintaining and who might be responsible for any flooding. I I'd like to achieve clarity at this stage if we can.
And actually, I guess staff can think about this when we bring back final as well, but we can also do a combination. I mean, in the H O A documents, you know, the H O A is is responsible, but ultimately, the the property owner also has to have some responsibility because typically that's where the problems occur because they change their their property or they, you know, the slope, all of that. So I I think it's a combination of, you know, obviously, the owners being responsible to comply with the terms and conditions of the plat and and the drainage as it was designed. And then the H O A also responds.
I've got I've got a question for you, Lisa. And I I must have the old agenda PDF, so I don't see the public comments quite yet. So I'm in the midst of downloading this letter from the Packer attorney. One question I would have, I see where your staff is saying it's a private matter, and I understand that position. I also worry, and that's why I'm asking you as our city attorney, if we as a commission approve subdivisions that land lock a parcel and don't create access for them, are we stepping into the realm of a taking? That would be my only question to from a legal perspective.
Yeah, I think we went over this with the P D O. There were a couple places in our ordinance. So we're really just looking at the ordinance requirements and our ordinance requires, you know, reasonable access for future development of adjacent properties. It's my opinion, and again, some people disagree, but the Packer parcel is already landlocked. Other than this, the argument of either a prescriptive easement or an easement by deed or an easement a pertinent. Any number of those arguments that they're making. So in in my opinion, now approval of this subdivision would not necessarily be considered a taking. We're providing reasonable access for future development in accordance with our ordinances.
So what you're suggesting is that on a future subdivision, though they might not have access now, they and some future subdivision, we would need to ensure there would be access. Is that what you're saying? Am I missing that?
You know, a- as we mentioned before, again, there's a lot of landlocked parcels in the city and what happens is sometimes they have to pair up with an adjacent piece of property. I think that typically, you know, it even like with the Woods Park P D O, we did require a stub road because we wanted the adjacent property to to be able to be developed. And also, we had the four hundred west coming through there. So you have to look at your your master streets plan, which is four hundred west, and that's what they're providing. And at the conceptual and P D O, there was discussion about even if we put a stub road in there, it wouldn't go anywhere. So again, it's I I think that that parcel, once it gets developed, it's most likely going to have access either off of you know, Main Street or four hundred west or coming from the north.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. My my second question, sorry, is back to Corey. Remind me, Corey, we had a discussion during the P D O about connecting to our trail system. I don't I don't see unless we're using the sidewalk as our connection to the trail system or some future connection off of four hundred west. I remember there being a discussion where maybe there was going to be some for lack of a better word, an alleyway or something like that. Can you speak to the trail tie-ins with this subdivision? Or at least not creating a barrier to our trail system?
Yes, there was discussion about a mid-block eight hundred feet. The idea was to maybe put some type of alley access to the Reading Elementary. And then there was a little bit of discussion on whether we needed to go north with that. Ultimately, what came out in all of that discussion is that the applicant approach to Reading Elementary, Reading Elementary was opposed to having a trail access to their property. They were uncomfortable with opening up additional ways traverse into their property. And I believe they sold a portion of their land to the developer, which created a shift in the road. And now you have lots backing on to the school district property where before the school district property fronted the sidewalk. And so there was, and it was a matter of where the road aligned. Did we do a walkway? And it all kind of washed itself away because the school district did not want a trail connection. So the road was shifted a little bit further to the south. But far but not so far that they couldn't purchase some property and create lots that back onto the school. So that's kind of where that disappeared.
Thank you.
Hey, Lisa, can I just ask you a quick question? I'm back to this parcel. I understand you're saying that it's a public or a private matter. I'm I'm wondering, at what point does what point do we have to take this evidence that we've received from, you know, a citizen? And utilize it as something as a finding or something that we're seeing that would that would guide our decision making because I'm I'm just a little bit nervous necessarily like I feel like by not making a decision on this, that's like for sure making a decision. And I it feels like by saying that it's a private matter, that's obviously siding with the developer, which is fine if that's the the legal advice you're giving us. But I I just worry about us not taking this public comment in from a resident who believes that they do have some substantial findings, I guess.
Yeah, and I think as soon as that legal argument of an easement, the dispute is is settled or recorded or determined by a court, at that point, we would recognize it. I think if you've read all of the legal opinions that we've had from both sides, you know, as Corey and I have said, this is, you know, it's interesting. It's a and but it it's not really our jurisdiction to decide this dispute. There's many factual issues that would have to be reviewed and decided. There's, you know, legal arguments, there's the doctrine of merger. You know, all of these things, and it's really up to the court to decide that. And 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 if the parties, you know, unless the parties can settle this. And so that's my concern. And I've said to Mr. Packer from the beginning, if if there's a easement of record on the title report, when I review the final plat, I require that to be on the plat. But in my opinion, this is a disputed easement. And so, yes, I understand by saying, you know, my advice to the city is to continue forward with the review and approval of this subdivision plat. At that point, if the plat is approved, it's basically the developer's risk that they're taking that this easement will be perfected. And and I suppose at that point, you know, the subdivision is going to have to be redesigned if it even moves forward.
So you wouldn't, you know, halt movement forward. You would just say this is a natural stage of if we move this forward, that would give some additional legal weight to whatever argument is being made by maybe the Packers so that they could then prove that. And then it would affect the developer. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I didn't quite follow you, but but basically I am saying that, yeah, we I think we're more at risk to hold this up. And because if you hold this up and say, parties, we want you to settle this, it's going to be possibly years. And what legal argument under our ordinances and an administrative decision in a preliminary plat did we have to hold up Symphony Homes? That that's my concern because honestly, I am not the one to decide whether the Packers have a prescriptive right or an easement a pertinent or a deed at easement that's not recorded.
Understand legally, so short of coming to us and and sort of making a public comment and saying like, these are the this is the evidence to show you that would affect the approval of this. Then what what you're saying is that a resident would have a legal avenue, but that is not going to be able to be taken unless we move forward. Is that what you're saying?
Either side can seek the a legal remedy immediate, you know, now they could have done it a year ago. So no, it's it's not the the legal remedy has been available throughout.
Not affected by us moving forward.
Well, the timing of it, if you're talking about the timing of of them using the the legal remedy, they can do that.
Really, and I I appreciate people sending me the Nova's agenda again, because I've read through the letter now. Really, what it comes down to, and I think what Lisa is trying to say is if it becomes a matter of or if it's stated on the title report associated with the final plat, it's going to be shown on the final plat. And therefore, on a lot in the subdivision, and it will be a matter of public record. And if somebody wants to buy a lot with an easement through it, that's fine. But Lisa is going to be the one that reviews that title report and make sure that any encumbrances are shown on that title report. And we don't get in the way of it. It's just a matter of a public record. Am I saying that accurately, Lisa?
Yeah, I I guess if it shows up on the title, yes, it will have to be shown on the plat. But in my opinion, we're probably going to be re reviewing the plat because you know, as we've stated, there's going to be, you know, do you have setback issues? How are you going to have a road in the backyard? So, yeah, but if it exactly, if it shows up on the title report, you know, Kevin and I review that and we go through the title and and everything of record we require to be on the plat. And, you know, that's a compromise as well that perhaps we just say that you know, Symphony Homes has to add a plat note referring to this notice of claim. So it it's, you know, technically, you know, given their their letter and their argument that, you know, this this easement claim, this disputed easement needs to be on the plat on the preliminary plat. You know, in order to comply with our ordinances, I think you could just require the it be referenced in the plat note.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
And I understand this is difficult. I mean, just, you know, easement law and and it's it's certainly emotional and a dispute between property owners. And again, I just, it's it's not something that I believe the city can solve. And I think we would be at risk if we tried to hold up the plat.
Just one point of clarification, because I know that has been discussed in the past because of statements that myself and Lisa have made. Our position on calling something landlocked is it does not currently have access on a public street. We're not taking a position in that statement that there may be a dispute that requires some type of other situation that provides that access. So it's been confused when we say it's landlocked. It's been confused that we are taking full position of Symphony side of the argument. We're not. We are saying it's a dispute. It just simply does not have access to a public road at this time.
Yeah, and thank you. I I didn't mean to imply that.
No, you you didn't. It's just been discussed in the past. So I just want it on the record that that's what we mean.
Great, thanks. All right, any other questions for staff before we go to the applicant? Okay. So with that, then we'd like to turn some time over to the applicant to discuss any of the issues that have been presented or the discussion by staff, anything in the staff report. Or anything else that you'd like the planning commission to know. So do we have a representative of the applicant who'd like to unmute and speak to this?
There we go.
You had it.
There you go. So my name, my name is Russ Wilson. I I'm the land manager for Symphony Homes. And I'm joined tonight by our by our development team that may may speak as well. But I first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for reviewing our application tonight. We really really appreciate all the directives and the input that's been given from the planning commission, the city council, and even the neighbors. We we feel like this is going to turn out to be a really great project, and we're excited to see it move forward. Over the past several weeks, we've been working really closely with our engineers and with city staff to ensure we're not only complying with the directives that we've been given, but making sure we we meet all city standards. And I'm I'm grateful to to Corey and and Lisa and also Kevin for all their time and their expertise. Kevin made a really good presentation about our comprehensive drainage plan. And he's he's given us a lot of suggestions that we feel like have really helped us out and and will make the drainage in this in this subdivision functionally nicely. Just a couple, couple minor things that I wanted to to comment on. There there were there was some discussion in previous hearings about U dot and what their plans were and and they're taking. We've we've agreed with U dot on on what they are taking, and that is incorporated into our plans. It doesn't affect our drainage. It actually helps our drainage. There are, as mentioned, we have some detention basins on the far west side of our subdivision. They they should handle the the stormwater really well and and yeah, I mean, it should be a a high high functioning system. And and I just wanted to note that those those detention areas will be owned and maintained by the H O A. That's that's a topic that's come up several times. We will have an H O A in this subdivision. They will handle, manage, own and maintain all the open space areas as well as the the yard drain systems. So that'll that'll be part of the the H O A. It'll be within our covenants for the subdivision as well as noted in our community disclosures that we get to all of our our homeowners. Just a couple of other items. Some of the major issues from the past hearings, one was access to the frontage road. As you can see from our plan, we we have provided that now. It was at the request of the public and and also there was some comment from the planning commission and city council. And after thinking about that and reviewing that that further, we've decided that that made sense. And we put that in in a location that was determined to be the best location by the city engineer. Density has been a big topic. But the max density for for this area or this zone is four units per acre. We we started out at three point eight units per acre, and now we're at three, three and a half units per per acre. And that was at the suggestion of the the city council. We we think their input on that was was beneficial, and and we think that 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 will yield a a nicer lot and and nicer building paths for our homes. The variances to the setbacks that we've requested were noted by Corey as well. That will allow us to have some wider homes in this subdivision, which will provide more interesting elevations for the homes and greater aesthetics overall. And then the minimum lot size actually increased as well. We we took that up to a minimum of fifty eight hundred square feet. Corey mentioned the remnant parcel and and he I I think he's got it right on it. We're we're we've been in talks with the neighbor there on on the corner of four hundred west and we've had discussions with them about possibly acquiring that corner parcel. But if for whatever reason that that doesn't pan out, we we are providing, we are planning on putting that corner parcel and turning it into open space in a green space area that will also be owned and maintained by the H O A. And then the the portion of that that's further east will actually be incorporated into that nearby lot. It's lot one forty eight, I believe. So that will that will be taken care of. There shouldn't be any issues with any remnant parcels or any irregular shaped lots. Regarding the the situation with the with our neighbor, Mr. Packer, I I've got our legal counsel here today. Mr. Kevin Anderson, and he can, he's going to provide you with a little bit more information on that.
Thank you, planning commissioners. It's a pleasure to appear before you. I'll be very brief because as Lisa and Corey have both said, we think that this is not an appropriate issue for preliminary plat consideration based on the reasons stated by Lisa and Corey, and I will review those again. In in total, I'll talk about some of them though to to help respond. This is, as Lisa said, this is a private dispute between private parties. We hotly dispute that the Packers have a legitimate legal easement right. We have submitted previously statements to the to the city about that about our position on some of the issues. We have a number of other arguments. The the Packers through their attorney. who files his letters just moments before meetings, that's happened today. It happened before the city council when we met with them a few months ago. They send in letters just minutes before and we don't have a chance, an opportunity to respond. We weren't even copied on this letter to the city council. We weren't copied on the notice of interest claim that they recorded against the property. But what they recorded is just a notice of a claim of interest. It isn't an easement. They don't have an easement that has been recorded. And so it's a, it's a dispute that is in full bloom. The issue can be resolved only by taking it to a court of law. They can prove up if they can what their easement is. We will dispute it. They have a number of theories. We have an equal number of defenses and counterclaims to those theories. But again, the planning commission and the city generally should not insert itself as the judge and the jury on this issue. And as Lisa pointed out, it's, it's illegal, we think, for the city to delay a decision to hold us up because we otherwise satisfy the requirements. And this easement issue they've raised isn't a legitimate requirement because it's not an easement of record. And so to hold this up would be inappropriate and you, you've received that counsel from your own attorney and from Cory and, and I don't need to labor that. One, one last comment though, and that is this. If the Packers have an easement and they prove it up and a court of law agrees with them, they will still have an easement. The fact that the preliminary plat is approved does not affect that. And so the, the approval of the preliminary plat doesn't deprive them of the ability to prove that they have an easement. And if they do, their easement will exist. The preliminary plat does not cut that off. One, one additional point related to that that has been touched on by some of your questions and by some comments of city staff. And that is if ultimately, and we don't think this can happen based on the law as we understand it. But if ultimately a court determines that the Packers have an easement and an easement is recorded based on that, we can still proceed with our subdivision. The easement is not inconsistent as we've gone through the code with any of the requirements for subdivision approval. It would encumber the back footage of a few lots. And those lots could still operate. There's still a sufficient buildable area that Cory referred to early in his discussion about the need to have a certain building envelope. There still would be a sufficient building envelope. And in fact, it creates some possibilities of, of these property owners having access along that easement as an alley and so forth. So we're willing to proceed. We're willing to take the risk if there is an easement. We'll accommodate it. It's consistent with our subdivision plan and we'll move forward. But again, there is this dispute. The, the planning commission should not try to resolve it as the judge and jury. That's not fair to any parties. And it shouldn't delay the matter because there's no basis for delaying it based on the ordinances. I'll conclude with this statement. As this planning commission knows better than I, the law in Utah is this. If the city standards have been satisfied, a subdivision must be approved. I think many of you have seen this book. This is used by many cities and many planning commissioners, many city council members. It's entitled Utah Citizen's Guide to Land Use Regulations and How It Works. And I'll just refer to the city quickly to one statement made in there. It's on page 91. And this book was written by Craig Call, former Utah Property Rights Ombudsman. In his statement, he says this. It must be remembered that under Utah law, if a subdivision application meets the conditions of a land use ordinance, it must be approved. And that's based on Utah Code Section 10-9A-509, which says an applicant is entitled to approval of a land use application if the application conforms to the requirements of the land use regulations, decisions and standards in effect. And so for all of those reasons and principally because of the counsel you've received from your own staff, your own attorney, the subdivision preliminary application should be approved and not held up because of this claim of easement. Let the parties resolve that through the courts as they should or by settlement negotiation. But it shouldn't be decided here by delaying or interfering with that opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Are there any, any questions that we can answer? Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I just have a comment. I really appreciate, obviously, I know the frontage access is, was a condition with, I think, either a condition or, you know, you worked with the city council to make that happen. I really appreciate that and I appreciate you working to satisfy that need for both coming from the planning commission and from residents, surrounding residents. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate, even though there are some smaller lots in this area, personally, as a way of just culture of a subdivision, I appreciate that you're going to have larger lots intermixed with smaller lots. I think that makes a better product. It makes a better neighborhood to have diversity in lot size and eventually home size that is not going to be just cookie cutter. Every single lot is the exact same. So I've, while I don't love small lots, you know, in general, I do appreciate that, that there's a good balance with that. And I appreciate that you've taken a lot of what we've talked about in the previous public comments and, and recommendations from planning commission and city council. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. We wholeheartedly agree and we're happy to do it. We think it yields a lot better project, like you've said. So thank you.
Great. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Nope. Well then, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, your input on that. And this time, this matter has been scheduled for a public hearing and we will go ahead and open up that public hearing and remind everybody that if you would like to speak to this issue, go ahead and use the raise hand feature within Zoom. And also when, when I call on you for your turn, if you would please introduce yourself and your, your residence or your, or your representation on the matter. So let's go ahead and open up the public hearing and we will invite Matthew Anderson to go ahead and introduce yourself and, and share your comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. I have, I've been a planning commissioner for, up in Kaysville for about 10 years and I've since resigned and let better people take over. But I understand the work and the difficulty and the time and the energy you put in this and I really appreciate that. And I, and I, it has been noted that I did send a cover letter with a packet. And I'll have to say, opposing counsel is Kevin Anderson. He's a dear cousin of mine, a first cousin. He's a great guy and a very good attorney. And so I'm not going to hotly contest his insinuations about some inappropriity that I didn't send him copies of it, the letter. I don't feel like I'm obligated to send him a copy of the packet. It was submitted to the public, the planning commission for your review. And I will note that there has been some discussions between the parties to get this matter resolved and I think there's some, I think there's some real progress to be made there. And I think both parties are, at this point anyway, proceeding in good faith. So there is that possibility, but I want to make a point and I want to make it very clearly, this easement is a matter of record. It's, I, the, the packet that has been presented to you shows that it's a matter of record. And in fact, it was recorded back in a, in a deed back in 1908 and has been recorded many times since then. And if there's any question about this, you can look at the applicant's own submission today. That includes a title report, exception number 17, that specifically mentions this warranty deed with an easement. So it is a matter of record. And interestingly enough, it doesn't show up on the plat. And the code, the Centerville Municipal Code requires that easements show on the plat submitted. So we're not asking you to be judge and jury and decide whether or not we have an easement. We have an easement. It's recorded. And the recorded easement needs to show up on the plat as well as in the title report. And that right there is enough for the planning commission to die to table, condition, or reject the request for a preliminary plat approval. There's a reason why the code requires easements to be reflected in a preliminary plat. Right? And there's also a reason why there's a, the title reports are required as part of a submission to a preliminary plat application. That's because easements are important and they vastly affect the position and configuration of a development. And in this case, contrary to what counsel said, this easement affects about 10 lots. And it's a significant change to the development. Now, if the developer is willing to proceed acknowledging our easement on the plat as well as in the title report and in the survey that will be required in the future, that's something they can do. But I think it behooves the commission to follow the code and not approve a preliminary plat application if it doesn't show the easements on the plat. This, just a little bit of background, back in 1908, this, this in a warranty deed and an easement that runs with the land or an apparent, a pertinent easement was recorded in 1908 and has been recorded since then. Anytime an easement is, runs with the land, it doesn't have to be recorded in the, in ensuing deeds. As long as the easement has not been extinguished, it, it survives. Moreover, on the ground, it's, there is a road there. And it's being used. And it's access to the Packers' property. Now, some may say that they're, they're landlocked because of a public road, but they have a written, recorded easement that is in use. And Symphony Homes knew about it before they purchased the property. So for them to ignore the plat, the requirements to put an easement on there is irresponsible and cert, and does not suggest to the planning commission what kind of a problem there is with this easement and its development. Now, it's, it's important to remember that this is, this is a planning commission and, and you are tasked with the ability, with the responsibility to assist in the planning. And this preliminary plat approval application requires that this easement be reflected in the plat and it's not. And that to me is sufficient grounds for a denial of this preliminary plat approval. It is, this easement is a matter of record and it's in use. And whether you want to ignore that or not, that's, that's understandable. But the fact that it's a matter of record and should be reflected and is not on the plat is, is a serious defect. There's just a few things, for example, in taking notes, the attorney suggested that, the city attorney suggested that it would be recognized if it is recorded. So it is recorded. It needs to be recognized. If the planning commission decides to go ahead and grant preliminary plat approval, even though there's this easement that conflicts with the plan development, then that's the planning commission's prerogative. But I don't think it's the planning commission's prerogative to ignore the code requirement that the plat, the plat show and reflect the easement. Are there any questions?
Nope. Are you? Yeah. So as, as you know, with the public hearings, it's, it's not usually a back and forth with the planning commission. If you have any questions for us or anything else that you'd like us to address, we can do that at the end of the public hearing.
That's fine. And I appreciate that. I just thought I would give you a chance to ask me questions if there were any about the packet or the law. But I'm happy to, to to pass over the conch. I know there's other people that want to talk. So thank you for your time. Again, I appreciate your service. I know this is a long, tiresome, difficult job sometimes and I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I will quickly, I'll remind the applicant that we will give time back to the applicant after the public hearing to address any of the comments that have made at this point or up to this point. So is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak to this matter, provide any input on this? I see a hand for Brendan Allen. I'll have Brendan Allen go ahead and introduce yourself and share your.
Yes, thank you. My name is Brendan Allen of Centerville, Utah. Just a continuation from the, the previous hearings that I've been able to attend in the past. I still have concerns with the safety of the new setbacks with emergency personnel being able to get through the side yards of the significantly reduced side yards and the plots there. And how that pertains to the public safety of our community. That's, that's my comment and concern.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. John Stahl, you'd like to step forward figuratively, introduce yourself and share your comments.
Yes, thank you for entertaining me. The, I'm John Stahl. I am a consultant and a land surveyor, working with the Packers, doing research and on this easement issue. There were just a couple of comments that I wanted to address. The ones, there was one mentioned that only a few lots are affected by this easement and that there was another comment that, well, only about 10 lots. Well, it's actually 13 lots that are affected by this easement. The easement, like Mr. Anderson stated, is of record. It's been of record since 1908. And it's actually a 33-foot wide easement according to the original deed for this easement. And this easement was created at the same time as the Packer parcel was created. So it was an easement created specifically to access the Packer parcel. It's like I say, 33 feet wide and it joins the entire southerly boundary of the Packer parcel and extends eastward all the way to Main Street, to the state highway. So it's a, you're talking about a 33-foot wide strip of land. And there was a comment earlier that I'd like to address of the, that somebody stated, well, all we have to do is we can accommodate this 33-foot easement even if with the preliminary plan approval as it's shown. And that's not quite the case because you've got along the back lines of those lots is a, proposed to be a 20-foot wide setback from the property line. So the back, the rear 20 feet of each one of the lots, 121 through 134, all of those lots would have this rear yard of 20 feet wide. But it's on top of a 33-foot easement. So there's only 17, well, the, if somebody built a house up to the, the rear yard setback line, that house would be constructed 17 feet into the 33-foot right of way, as it's described in the deed. So just to be aware that the, the impacts are quite. The impacts are quite extensive with the placement of this easement and. And I've, I changed the title of this easement all the way forward. It actually was an easement that served as many as ten pieces of property. Originally, it was created for Packers parcel, but then was also used to access property all the way clear down to the frontage road. And it's actually, it was a lane by the named Drake Lane and many of the deeds refer to it as Drake Lane. So. I do think the, the impact on this lane is going to be quite significant. It does provide access to and has always provided access to the Packer parcel. And that's what it's been created for. It is an easement of record. And. The preliminary plat requirements state that you, they should, that all easements of record should be shown. As well as easements by use. And at, even if they are, there is an argument that this is not a record, an easement of record. It is certainly a roadway that exists physically on the ground and has phys, is physically being used by Packers to access property. So there is, it is an easement by use and should be shown on the preliminary plat. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. All right. Anybody else from the public that would like to. Raise their hand and. Speak on this issue before we return the time to the applicant. Seeing no one. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And. Turn the time back over to the applicant to address any of the comments that have been made and. Providing the further insights.
Thank you. I'm going to refer back to Kevin Anderson to address a couple of the comments that were made.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief comments. You can see how convoluted this issue has become and is becoming. First of all, though, as you can all see by now. My dear cousin, Matt Anderson's side of the family has all the good looks. But with respect to this issue, as much as I esteem Matt. I think that they are inaccurate as a matter of law. He's referred, he's referred to and also Mr. Stahl has referred to. A. Deed. That included a reference to an easement. That was dated in nineteen, well, nineteen oh eight initially and then subsequently nineteen seventy-two. That deed was over fifty years ago. The key issue is that when the property was deeded to. Symphony Homes. There was no easement reserved or noted. And that is made even more compelling because when Mr. Packer was deeded his property. There was no easement reserved or noted. And so while there may have been an easement in nineteen oh eight. Or even in nineteen seventy-two. There is not an easement now. That is hotly contested. And that issue would need to be proved up before a court of law. And so again, I would just counsel the planning commission. To listen to your city attorney. You don't need to listen to me. Listen to your city attorney and planning staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else from the applicant or did I cover it for you?
I think, I think that's it unless the commission has any questions.
It is appropriate to ask the applicant questions. So from the commission, any questions?
Yes, I, I have a question. So the question is exception coverage number seventeen. Can the applicant please describe what that is? I may have follow-up depending on the answer.
Thank you. I guess my response to that, and I've just seen the letter earlier about three minutes before this meeting started. But my understanding is that exception seventeen is reflecting that there was a deed. Back in nineteen seventy-two that reflected an easement. But as I mentioned, there's also a deed that Packer received. Just a few years ago that doesn't show any easement. Nor did his predecessor who owned the property for many, many years before transferring it to Packer. Neither did he receive in his deed, any indication of an easement. And so while there was a deed in nineteen oh eight apparently and in nineteen seventy-two apparently. There is no reservation of an easement in the deed to Symphony Homes. The title was passed clear. Free of any liens not identified. And there was no easement reflected in the deed to Packer or his predecessor. So I think just in summary. Item seventeen, exception seventeen is just noting that there was a deed that reflected an easement in nineteen seventy-two.
And, and if I'm, if I may follow up, that is the. Because, because the exception doesn't tell us where that easement lies. For my clarity. That exception involves the easement. That everybody's talking about. This isn't some other random easement somewhere else, correct?
Thank you for asking that. Because of the late submission of that, I haven't had a chance to check the easement, but. Are you aware of any, I think it probably is talking about. A similar parcel. It may not be exactly the same width, but I think it's a similar issue.
Sure. So does, does anybody at Symphony, have you reviewed that book page and entry number?
We have, yeah, we have. So, so exception seventeen is a, and I could even pull it up. It's a, the deed between. And I can't remember the parties. The party before the owns the property before the DeBoer family who we purchased the property from.
Okay. So you got it, you have a title report that reports an interest. And your claim is, is that that interest was extinguished, but that extinguishment is not on the title report, correct?
There is no document that I'm aware of that says it was extinguished, but it should be noted that. Packer himself through his. Team that's assisting him filed a notice of claim of interest. That is inconsistent with the idea that he has a deed at easement that's without challenge or without question. To the contrary, that shows that they believe there is not a deed that is without challenge or question. And consequently, they're compelled to file a notice of interest, a notice of interest of claim. In order to provide the public with knowledge that there is a claim of an easement.
Right. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you Chair Daly for allowing me latitude. That was a lot. I apologize.
But I'm going to follow up on Mason's question. I've got a question of the developers. If you feel like essentially the easement is no longer valid, why have you not worked with your title company to remove that exception on the title report? Why is it still there?
So we've, so we've. We've, we have and we're in the process of looking at that. Our, our title company all along has told us that they don't believe that there is an easement. Specifically to Mr. Packer. And that's the position that they've held for. For since before we purchased the property.
I understand they may say that, but the actual document, the title commitment. Still shows it, which means that what they're possibly telling you and what is shown on the title commitment do not match up. So if they're not willing to remove that exception from the title commitment, they must feel that there is a valid claim.
Or a risk.
Or at risk. Thank you, Mason. Yes.
I think it's the latter. I don't think they're acknowledging that there's an easement. They're simply reflecting what the historic record is. And that's different. And the more current information shows that there was no easement reflected. Again, on the deed to Packer or his predecessor. And there was no easement reflected on the deed from the divorce to Symphony Homes.
But your title company. It appears is not willing to ensure around that if they're not willing to remove it. That would, I guess, would be my point. And that's a, that's a sticky point for me. Again, I'm not saying that's a basis for denial, but it's a definitely a red flag. For us as a commission, as a city staff that when and if a final plat comes about. And if it's still on the commitment, it will be shown on the plat, I would assume. And I'll defer again to Lisa on that, but. If it's shown as on the schedule B is an exception. I would assume it would have to be shown on the plat. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, I'm, that's been my position is if there is an easement of record. Shown in the title report, we're going to check and make sure it's on the plat and, and I'd be fine with a condition, you know, a condition of preliminary plat approval is that all easements of record are shown on the final plat. As well as a plat note referring to the book and page number and calling out the notice of claim.
And that would, would have been my follow-up question because I don't see on this preliminary plat. Exception seventeen. So I, I like what you're saying, Lisa. I agree.
I mean, it doesn't solve the issue, but it gives us a little bit more time.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It doesn't necessarily solve the issue, but if it's shown on the commitment. It, it requires us as a city to, to enforce it on a final plat.
Right. And that's our code and, and state law. I mean, if it's an easement of record. Show it on the plat. We just have to dispute or debate. You know, exception number seventeen.
We don't have an issue with that either. If, if that shows up on the final title report. We will disclose that on the, on the plat. Again, we don't think that affects the viability of the subdivision, but we'll reflect it.
We, we are aware of the, the purported width of the right of way, thirty-three feet and, and we've looked at that in relation to our lots. And the lots that would be affected by that and it, it wouldn't affect the, the building pad area. We, we would still be able to build our, our floor plans within the building pad. And outside of the easement.
Can you speak to the comment that, you know. The requirements for our city approval are, we need to show a recorded easement. And an easement by use on the plat. Or on the. Was it on the plat or was it on the preliminary? I'm forgetting now. Can you speak to that comment about that and whether. I mean. We, that's not shown right now. And if that's Lisa, what we are requiring by ordinance.
I'll read the, the referred to section of our code. And it, this is saying that. The preliminary plat, so again, it's not. I don't know if we're talking final, but the preliminary plat. Shall include the following and subsection L says the location, principal dimension and names of all existing or recorded streets. So again, in my opinion, existing is disputed, but. The location, principal dimension and names of all existing or recorded streets, alleys and easements. Both within the proposed subdivision and within one hundred feet of the boundary thereof, showing whether recorded or claimed by usage. That latter part of the sentence showing whether recorded or claimed by usage. Falls under the first part that talks about, you know. Existing or recorded, in my opinion. So that's the dispute. If this is existing or recorded. We want it on the plat, the preliminary plat. And then please also tell us if you're claiming that by right, by deed or by usage. So it doesn't, you know. First, you have to comply with the first half of the sentence, which proves an existing or recorded easement. And I'll agree with. With Mr. Packer's attorney on that. If it is a recorded easement, it will be on the plat.
But that, would that be grounds for dismissal is what I, we heard on, on a public comment that because it is not currently on the preliminary plat. For this. This right now that we're seeing, then it would, would that be grounds for dismissal? Cause it's not on there right now.
I, I think the term is denial. I, I don't see that this is fatal to the, the application. The question is just whether it's going to be shown on the plat or not. But I think it does have some implication and, you know, if it is on there, we're going to have to look and see if this is a good plan for, for final.
Yeah, I just weigh in on that. Your preliminary is to set the standards for final. So we, we already have some things that are missing on the plat. The question becomes is, is what do you identify that needs to get on to the final plat? And I think Lisa has balanced that question between your review of preliminary. Unless you feel that, that the subdivision development has, is violating an ordinance, denial for me is out of the question. If you can condition compliance, then you move it to the next step.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other questions for the applicant before we. Move on. All right. Thank you for that discussion on that. All right. Back to the commission. Any other comments or questions for staff or anything else? Corey, it looks like you've got something to say.
You had one comment that I noted about the public safety with the setbacks.
Yes.
By ordinance, between buildings and access for emergency personnel is six feet. So. It provides the minimum distance. And if, and that six feet is not just on one lot, you can split it between other lots. So we have places where it's five and five that provides ten. So if emergency personnel need to go through to get there, they have that clearance.
Except that there's usually a fence there, right? So.
And that's what your tools and equipment are for. Same reason they cut a hole into your, into your roof, they'll cut a hole into a fence.
Right. Okay, that's a good call out on that. Thank you, Corey.
Kevin, did the public hearing or was it still open for public comment? I, I must have missed that in all the melee.
We did close the public hearing and then we went back to the applicant for response to the public hearing. So. Thanks for checking up on me though. All right. So for the commission, any other discussion or. Potential. Addition of a condition. Anyway, Mason?
I think I'll, I'll open up with just my thought process and where I'm leaning in, in my voting, just to start the discussion if that's okay. We are here on an administrative decision, decision. So we shall approve this. Unless the ordinances are not being followed. And of course, as indicated in our ordinance, we have different options in front of us. We can approve, approve subject to modification or disapprove. The submitted preliminary plat and shall make findings specifying any inadequacy in the, in the application. So Centerville zoning code fifteen dot oh three dot oh three O sub L. Requires that the preliminary plat show all existing or recorded, et cetera. My understanding of this section requires planning commissioners to indicate. Or to require that a preliminary plat include all existing easements. And then it creates a separate category called recorded easements. And as we've been instructed, easements can exist without recording. As a result, I believe that this preliminary plat does not satisfy the, the requirement of the ordinance, that it show existing easements. And here's why I come to that conclusion. Both parties have indicated that there is a title exception, number seventeen. Both parties have indicated that it involves the easement in question. Neither party disputes that there were documents predating nineteen seventy-one. And there is a dispute about whether or not that, that easement still exists. However, in front of us, it is undisputable that the title company believes that there is something there worth noting as an exception. As a result, it's beyond dispute in front of us at this time that it has not met the preliminary plat requirements that it show all existing easements. As a result, I would be in favor of approving with modification. That anything that comes back to us reflect whatever is in that title report as. that anything that comes back to us reflect whatever is in that title report as currently listed, or that any underlying supporting documents be updated to indicate why it doesn't need to be there at the final plating stage.
Well, Mason said it exactly like, I wish I would say it if I was so eloquent.
Ditto, ditto here, too.
Yeah, I know, that, very good, very well put, Mason. That's actually a lot of the same thoughts that I had. The only, maybe for the sake of devil's advocate on this is maybe a brief discussion among the commissioners about the merits of approval with condition or table and say, resolve item number 17, exception 17. So approve with condition or table. Does anybody feel strongly one way or the other? I, I don't, but I kind of want to hear some, some thoughts on that from anybody that might have them.
I'll follow through with the thought, but I, I've already monopolized enough. So can somebody else lead out on that one?
I was going to say, Kevin, you really don't even have to talk about exception 17 specifically. It's just what Mason said in the ordinance. It says if there's an exception of record, it should be showed on the preliminary plat. And it's not shown on the preliminary plat. So if you were to follow the letter of the law, you would just disapprove it, because it's not shown on the plat. I think what Mason's airing on is a little bit of in-between, saying, hey, look, just because it's not shown on the, on the preliminary plat, it will be shown on the final plat if it's still a matter of record. And so we'll let the process continue. So, you know, I, I think that's maybe a little leeway and maybe the commission's way of, of seeing both sides of the story, but also being very black and white, that, hey, this is, shows up on the title commitment. Every exception that is shown on the title commitment should be shown on the plat and at a final.
And I'll echo that. I think that this is something that's easily corrected. It's, it's just a bunch of lines on a plat, right? I would say that disapproval, I think Corey really had a, a strong position or a persuasive position. We, we ought to be disapproving when they come in with complete junk. And this, in my mind, and I'm, I'm being very colloquial here, but this isn't complete junk. This, this conforms with a lot of great things, but it doesn't with this requirement. And therefore, I think a modification is the correct direction to go. I also have to note that my analysis doesn't end there. Even if the exception is eliminated from the title report, I, it's going to be a lift to help me understand why a final plat would still be in compliance, absent showing the, the alleged easement. I, I need to probably sit down with Lisa and she needs to teach me better. But I, I'm, I'm stuck on this idea that there's the word existing and then a new category called recorded. And then at the very end, that there'd be an annotation of whether an easement is recorded or claimed by simple usage or a prescriptive easement. I, I feel like the Centerville zoning code doesn't just limit itself to recorded titled exceptions or documents, but actually has an ambit towards prescriptive rights that are not recorded. And that's my worry. So I'm fine with approving a modification, simply because in front of us is this one little bit of a title exception that ought to be remedied. But that doesn't stop my analysis on the final plat phase, even if the title company is willing to ensure over that exception by removing it.
Mason, I, I understand and appreciate your reading that existing must mean something different than recorded, if you have reference to existing and recorded. The, and I am no real estate attorney. So I am certainly outside of my area of expertise on this particular issue. But it, it, it sounds like to me that there is a dispute over whether there is an existing easement, right? Not necessarily maybe even recorded, but a dispute over what is an existing easement. And in that case, I wonder who is the adjudicator? Who gets to decide then whether it's an existing easement or not? And isn't that something that we as the city need to step back and look and wait for a judge or a jury, right? Or a finder of fact to make that decision? And so I, I, I would be, I would personally be curious to, to hear Lisa's way in to your proposal with regards to your reading of exception number 17, and whether the, or whether the existence of that exception is sufficient to create a rise to a quote unquote existing easement.
Yes, well, thank you. I think you just said it better than I could. And, you know, obviously, I'm not being very persuasive. But yeah, that, that's my reading of the ordinance is existing or recorded, but there's a dispute as to whether that's existing. And I, I just don't think the city is the finder of fact or the adjudicator of these legal issues and this dispute. But if it is on the title, I mean, I think that's where I differ with Commissioner Care. I think if it is in the title report, it should be on the plat. If it's not on the title report, I don't think it should be on the plat. I don't, even in the future, I, I do not recommend, you know, putting a prescriptive easement on there that hasn't been perfected by the court. I can't wave a wand and say there's a prescriptive easement. They have to go to court to perfect that.
Thanks for your comments, Lisa, and I-
Could I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, respond to her.
I was just going to ask Lisa, so would you agree that it is a fair reading? That it is currently recorded as an exception on the title report?
I would like to have more time. Again, we got this argument, so I'm happy to go look at the record. But again, I'm going to wait and see what Symphony's title company does. And I'm just going to look at the title report.
As currently listed, there is an exception. So in front of us today, what's that?
Yeah, exactly. And, but we're just saying there's an exception referring to a 1972 deed. You know, we haven't reviewed all of those documents. We haven't reviewed the history. We've had testimony as to that. So anyway, I just, yeah, if it's there on the title report, put it on the plat, is my opinion. If it's not, then I'm not going to require it on, my suggestion would not be to require it on the plat. And let the parties deal with that.
Interestingly, this is a little side note, and sorry, I'm not going to take too much time on it, Lisa, but it almost seems like the code may confuse a plat to an alta survey, where an alta survey might show much more detail than maybe a plat would. Anyways, that, that's just a side note that you may want to think about as it relates to our code and clearing up any language. I'll leave that to you. Sorry.
Well, and it may be that our code, you know, obviously conceptual requires things that don't end up going on the plat. You know, we talk about building envelopes and things like that, that don't actually make it on to the plat, but it's relevant to our decision-making. And so yes, there may be some items even at preliminary that we'd like to see so that we can make a final decision and review those items, sort of like the existing conditions inventory. But not everything in, in the subdivision approval process goes on the final linen that's recorded.
One last thought. Sorry, and then I'll shut up. I am, I am inclined to follow the expertise of our city attorney when it comes to this issue with dealing with the, the dispute regarding the easement. I mean, I recognize that a court may disagree, but we look to our city attorney for her guidance and expertise on this issue. So right now, I am, I am in favor of approving the preliminary plat with the expectation that if the title report comes back and says something, then we can include it. And if the title report doesn't include it, then it doesn't get included on the plat. That's where I'm leaning right now, unless somebody can persuade me otherwise.
Well, I'm not going to persuade you otherwise, but I'll just tell you what I, what I think. I, I highly value and appreciate the expertise of Lisa. And I agree with you that we should rely very strongly and very heavily on her expertise on that. And I also know that we have a couple, a couple of lawyers on our, you know, commission, and we have some developers who have some experience. So I would for sure want to rely on all of your experience and understanding. I'm a citizen planner, and I don't have that kind of expertise. And I just also have to kind of go with what I am seeing here at this meeting and what feels for me. When, when Mason brought up the exception to the applicant, and it's clear that the title company is, is not willing to, you know, show that without the exception, to me, I feel like that's a pretty big red flag. And then with the comment that talked about this easement affecting 13 lots, that's a significant portion of, I mean, that's what, like, at least 20% of what is happening here in this development. I, I just, I'm just, I have this like weird, a little bit hesitant nature of feeling like something that affects this preliminary plat so much, 20%, and is clearly shown by the applicant even with this exception, I don't feel comfortable, because I don't know that that's going to, that what we're seeing on this plat is actually going to be able to work. And I'm not saying that I'm being a judge, jury, or whatever. I'm just saying I would love to get further clarity about this before I say, yeah, you know, like, I've seen stuff from public hearing, I've seen stuff from the applicant, and this to me is a, a red flag showing that this could affect the preliminary plat. And now I'm going to just move forward anyway. I kind of feel like, well, yeah, the applicant showed this, the public comment has showed us this. So let's take that and say, right now, it's not showing the requirements of the code, which say that that needs to be shown on the plat, the preliminary plat, before it's approved. So for me, even though I, I think I'm taking a pretty conservative approach on this, and I know that that's not always how I am, I am a little bit nervous about moving forward with a plat that maybe change, maybe affected so greatly.
Can I respond to that just a little bit? I appreciate all the discussion. And as, as I have to Commissioner Wright, we've, we've bumped, we've tried, at least on my part, I was told to be a little softer and kinder. So this is my chance to be a little softer and kinder to it. But I think this is where your, your conservatism, although valid from a citizen planner standpoint and the information you're hearing, you're placing the city now as a party, from my opinion, into resolving this dispute by using subdivision ordinance that in a preliminary plan is trying to just simply say, what are we dealing with? And the struggle that I have with trying to table the information or not move forward, and why I'm recommending resolve the dispute is because the additional information that you're seeking for is not going to happen until it gets adjudicated. And under state law, from my standpoint, is, is that we have a land use right attached to administrative. And it's very clear to me under state law that there are things that we do in subdivision and zoning that the state enables us to adopt and to regulate. But there are a lot of things in Ledma that tells the municipalities and counties, these are not things that you regulate. So an example is lot line adjustments. There's a simple one. City uses, city and counties were heavily involved in lot line adjustments. State law has gone back to clearing, to clarify that and say, oh, no, we don't want you solving those kind of problems. Let landowners between each other handle their matters in this kind of situation. Now, that's an oversimplification of a dispute of this nature. But I think it falls on the same principle. As you apply the subdivision ordinance, if you feel that it has to be conditioned upon, I don't oppose that. But I'm really concerned by doing a tabling action and saying, I need some more information. And we just simply put a holistic pause on adjudicating a dispute between a property owner that really under state law says, that's not your role, city.
Right. And I, that's, that's a question that I guess I have, is that if, if there's an exception on the title, is the only way of figuring that out through adjudication?
The dispute will be is, is, again, that exception is calling out something that's not perfected. So Lisa and I have talked, and she can weigh in. That just may simply be a note on the plat that says, there's a claim of interest, and it's noted on the plat, and we're done.
So that's, so that's, so what I'm saying is, if that's so simple, why can we not have that on the preliminary plat, which is required in our ordinance to have that on the preliminary plat? That's, I'm not trying to say I want to adjudicate and I want to stall this. What I'm trying to say is, the ordinance has said, this needs to show. And if it is so simple that there is an exception on this, this, then that's where I'm a little bit, that- whatever this is.
We're talking past each other a little bit. That's Commissioner Care's point. Move it on with a modification and say, if it shows up, it's got to be on the plat. If it doesn't show up, it doesn't come on the plat according to Lisa, but maybe not as confident on Commissioner Care's part. That's what I'm hearing. What I heard you say is, I'm uncomfortable moving forward.
Because I didn't think that it was following the ordinance that says this required easement or easement by use should be on the preliminary plat. I'm not saying I want to adjudicate, and I'm like siding with one or another. I'm just saying, I thought that we have to go by the ordinance that says a recorded easement or an easement by use should be on the preliminary plat. And if it's not, then it does not satisfy the application. So that's where I'm going. I'm not, I'm not trying to cause anyone problems. I'm just saying, if it's not on there, it's not fulfilling the requirements. And because it doesn't fulfill the requirements, I do think at 20% of affected lots, that's a pretty big deal as far as what could be affected on this preliminary plat, plot.
Be the argument, then you should be denying the plat even in staff's recommendation, because there are many things that are not on the plat that are conditioned to be on the future plat. And they affect-
Do they affect it 20%?
100% of the lots.
Sorry, go ahead.
And they affect 100% of the lots, and it's undisputed.
Okay.
And that's all I'm trying to say, is if we're going to be exacting over a dispute, we should be exacting then that until everything's perfected in the plat, we shouldn't be doing that. And my statement is, is that's not the purpose of preliminary. The purpose of preliminary is a discovery process and to find out what's missing. And either holistically, it needs to be held up until you get the information, or it can be conditioned upon to be modified for final. And I think Commissioner Care's proposal idea is the one that I would support, and I believe Lisa would support, because it substantially complies with our ordinances. But to hold up a dispute as if it doesn't comply with our ordinances, for me, is going too far.
Right. I, I just was reading it saying that it was required. So I appreciate your perspective. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Becky. Yeah, you know, after all that discussion, I think, yeah, I'm inclined to support the care plan for this approach and, you know, do a, have a conditional approval and kind of move the process forward with the expectation that, you know, maybe we'll, we'll either record, or we'll show it, or resolve it, or some, you know, at some point in the future. So any further discussion? Are we ready for a motion? Mason, you have something to say?
I'm going to do a motion, but I wanted to wait for discussion.
Motion, please.
Okay. I don't see anybody else popping up from you, so go ahead.
I hereby make a, I hereby make a motion for the planning commission to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for the Summer Hill Lane subdivision, subject to the following directives and conditions. I'm not going to recite them verbatim, because I'm just going to adopt all of them as indicated in the staff report. I am going to add the following. Number nine, that the final plat shall comply with Centerville zoning commission, or sorry, Centerville zoning code 15.03.030 sub L.
I'll second that, and I'm wondering if you would accept a friendly amendment. This is something that was suggested by Lisa, that the plat note show the book and page number and a notice of claim.
Agreed.
You can correct me. I wrote that down, so I don't know if that's really accurate, so she can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
So if you don't mind, I will accept that amendment with a minor mo- So if you don't mind, I will accept that amendment with a minor modification. That it be a a condition ten. And and we just add that as a separate condition.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion on the, on the motion?
Okay, let me make sure that I am understanding your number nine, Mason. Because saying that it shall comply with the code section that you've referenced. Still leaves some ambiguity as to what constitutes an existing easement.
That was deliberate on my part.
And 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 I had understood that Lisa was comfortable with. Essentially refining that code to clarify. That existing easement means anything that is reflected in the title report. And that if it's not in the title report, that it's not going to be considered an existing easement. For purposes of the city code. Is that your understanding as well? Yeah, I want to ask you, Lisa, as the city attorney, if we put in the language that Mason has suggested without any clarification. Is that leaving us, are we just kicking the can down the road?
I actually, I like the motion because it is our code. The, you know, the only concern is that this says. It it shall be on the preliminary plat, not necessarily the final. And that's why I was saying any easement of record should be on the final plat. I couldn't find a similar provision in our final plat section, so. Um but I am okay because I I think, you know, obviously we have to look a little bit more closely at that. Condition number seven seventeen. And um so anyway, I I'm fine with the way he's. Drafted the motion because we are kicking the can down the road, but. Um it gives staff a little bit more time to to look at that.
And and I like how Mason did that deliberately because it keeps us within the bounds of the code. While continuing the process. I mean, again, I think what Mason's trying to do is. We're not the judge jury adjudicator. Here's the code. Let's stay with the code and move the process forward. So I like that.
I'm sorry, if I, I know this is inappropriate during the motion, but I also just want to say is. I'm not actually the official interpreter of the zoning code. The zoning administrator is. And so that's why I like that as well. I'm not the end all. I'm just saying, this is my opinion, how I interpret the code. Um but ultimately, it might be up to the the zoning administrator with my advice, but um so. And and for everyone to to interpret it on their own and and the planning commission has some interpretation authority as well.
Okay, I like that and I appreciate it. Cause at some point, somebody at the city, it sounds like the zoning administrator has to make a decision as to what constitutes an existing easement. Period. Somebody has to make that. Let's defer to the zoning administrator. Okay, I, Lisa, I appreciate you for weighing and that gives me comfort. Um I like the motion.
And I'll also, if I could respond to that. Yeah, as a planning commissioner, I'm supposed to be wearing a planning commissioner hat, not an attorney. I ought not be acting as an attorney. And sometimes it's just difficult to leave that behind. Um maybe Lisa and I will have a professional uh difference of opinion about what constitutes the proper interpretation of this section. Ultimately, it's my obligation to follow our legal counsel and the zoning administrator. And that's why I'm punting.
I think it's a smart punt, now that I think it through. I appreciate all of the comments on that.
No, I think that's a smart punt as well, or kicking the can down the road and also, but I think the expectation is pretty clear to staff and. Even the applicant of kind of what? What we expect for the next time we see this, right? So. Alright, anybody else have anything to say?
I'll just say that that's the way that he phrased that was what I was, that's what I was hoping that we were following, so. I feel comfortable moving forward with this. Um I know that Cory and I love each other. I just want everyone to know that. And we agree, but sometimes we don't communicate so that we understand each other. So it's good for us to walk through this and talk through it. And it helps me better understand because, like I said, I wear a citizen planner hat and I. I will totally like want to use all of your experience, but I will also. Still use that because that's just my perspective. So I appreciate that extra um number nine and ten. So thanks for that, Mason.
Now Becky, I think that's fine. I think there's a healthy friction that uh comes about with this. So, anyway. Um, okay, so with that, let's go ahead and. We will vote and everybody's moved around on my screen a little bit, so we're gonna vote in different order than I think we did before, so get ready.
Um Commissioner Daly?
Yes.
Do we need to do a second? Was there a second or did I totally miss that?
We did. Becky seconded your motion.
I totally missed that. My mistake. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Becky seconded it. Uh but just to, just to reiterate where, you know, so we are voting on the motion. One through eight in the staff report plus nine and ten. As proposed by Mason and seconded by Becky. Okay, uh then let's start with Commissioner Hayman.
Hi.
Commissioner Summer Hayes.
Hi.
Commissioner Wright.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Hi.
Commissioner Shagru.
Hi.
Commissioner Care.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Alright, thank you, everybody. That was, that was a uh, a um rigorous discussion and, but I feel like we. Uh did a good job there of covering a lot of ground, obviously weighing all the. The discussion that we had and and the input that we received from everybody. So. Uh let's move along now to our fourth public hearing of the night. Uh this is zoning code amendments. Uh newspaper noticing amendment and we will turn the time over to, I'm guessing Lisa, to discuss this one.
Yes, and if I could, uh the share screen's disabled or maybe Mackenzie, you wanna allow me to share? Um or if you wanna pull up the ordinance.
Give it a try now.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so can everybody see the ordinance? Okay, great. Your next item is a proposed text amendment to our zoning code and subdivision ordinance. Um it's that time of year where we start going through all of the uh ordinance changes. Uh or the required ordinance changes from the legislative session. So any or any statute that didn't have a, an effective date becomes effective on May fourth. Um so that is quickly approaching. So I've just um. Started going through some of those bills and this one I wanted to make a priority because um SB two oh one. Um I think is a bill that's very favorable for the cities, um eliminating a lot of newspaper notice. Um including eliminating newspaper notice for any zoning code, general plan or zoning map amendments. Meaning, we do not have to contact the newspaper and and pay uh money to actually post that. I think that there's a lot more effective ways for noticing as well. And I think the legislature has recognized that as well as the fact that newspapers are going to. A weekly print and it's been very problematic for the city. You know, we have to. Almost notice these about a month out just to get them in the newspaper in time on a, on a weekly schedule, so. Um with these amendments, I'm also, I I kind of went back and um. Added some of the uh suggested amendments given our uh land use training. Um so I'll highlight those as we go through, but essentially throughout, I think this was a suggestion from um. Commissioner Hayman that we say public hearings and public meetings. Um so throughout, I'm just adding public before the word meeting, not a substantial change. Um let me see if I can make my screen bigger. There we go. Um. Okay, so this uh is also an amendment. You'll see anytime it says the Utah Public Notice website, I've taken out the statutory reference. Because there were two competing, well, two bills and both of them were passed and they had. They, they're moving the Utah Public Notice website statute to a different area and. They had different statutory references. And so anyway, I wasn't sure which one. Uh was going to govern, so I'm just gonna take out the statutory reference and that solves it. Um and this is just kind of fixing this with the local media correspondent or sending it to the newspaper.
Lisa, out of curiosity, what, who is a local media correspondent other than a newspaper?
Yeah, so this one um would be back in the day when we actually had journalists that would come to our meetings. And um with their little pad of paper and uh so we could notify um a journalist or something. A local media correspondent would be somebody that writes for one of the the newspapers. And we used to do that, you know, we we had. Uh some, some journalists that we knew and and sent them this and. Um but this, we're also gonna have to look at internally because they do talk about um just using the Utah Public Notice website. Because people can sign up and automatically get notified, which is what I would like to do with some newspapers. And then we don't have to remember to do this all the time, but um anyway, hopefully that'll get solved. Um but this is the big change. The first public hearing for general plan enactment or zoning code or zoning map, we no longer have to publish the ten days before the hearing, the newspaper notice. Um we will provide for the, the first, again, our ordinance divides it into the first public hearing. Because that's the way the statute is set up versus any subsequent public hearing. And so we're trying to emphasize just for the first public hearing, we have a lot more notice. And that first public hearing is usually at the planning commission. Well, it's always at the planning commission level for these land use items. Now, I wanted to. Highlight this because we talked about this in the land use training and I I went back and forth whether to add a substantive change. But this is uh my suggestion as we discuss that any subsequent notice for public hearings on. General plan, land use and zoning map, which means the public hearing usually at the city council. Or perhaps a public hearing if the planning commission tabled the matter. But if we go to three calendar day notice before the public hearing rather than ten days. If we have a planning commission meeting on Wednesday, we can get it on the next city council meeting the next week. With the ten day notice, the applicant has to wait three weeks. Just to get on the agenda. So I'm gonna suggest that. We'll see what the council wants to do with it. I think the planning commission's already said, we think it's a good idea. I just added in here that Wausau Front Regional Council is our association of governments, so we have reference to that. Um then also suggesting that we talked about before that this posting notice on site. I'm suggesting going from ten days down to five days. This is a courtesy notice. It's not required by law. It's a courtesy notice that Centerville does. They go out with these A-frame signs and they post notice. Of um the first public hearing on zoning map amendments, conditional uses and conceptual site plan. So those are the three items, but I'm just suggesting a five day which allows that notice to go out on Friday. So we're doing the packet, we're thinking about it. Let's go, you know, post the site as well. So that's a substantive change, not based on SB two oh one. Um also, I'm adding in, remember we talked about these additional notices when we went over chapter three. Um there's the high priority transportation notice, illuminated sign notice and standards and specifications. So I'm just suggesting um based upon my previous recommendation that we add. Reference to those statutory notices. So as staff is reviewing, you know, what notice has to go out. There's this trigger to remember these state statutes. We won't use them very often, but it's just a trigger to remind us. I also like it too because then I don't have to remember where that statute is. It's right here. Um it also helps me when um every legislative change, you know, we can just. I I can look at this statute and see if there's any updates. So helps with that. Keeping them up to date. Okay, now we go to the subdivision ordinance and I'm making all the similar same changes in the subdivision ordinance. Only we're talking about different types of applications, not necessarily general plan and zoning, but subdivision applications. But as I went through this subdivision ordinance, I I kept thinking, ah, I thought. We made these changes to the section of the code, but I think we just made it to the draft that we're still working on. That we've been working on for years. So I went ahead and implemented, put all those recommended changes. Um so that this section of the subdivision ordinance more closely mirrors our noticing section in the zoning code. So we didn't have, you know, reference to our annual schedule and publishing notice on the Utah Public Notice website. So there were some substantive changes that we needed to make to our code, again, not solely on um the new statute. Uh then I highlighted this one, the notice for the first public hearing. On subdivision says three days and um. I just kind of highlighted that for me because I wanna double check on plat amendments and make sure that we're in compliance with that. But I'm not suggesting any changes necessarily. Um and then the subsequent public hearing here is also three days. So see, we didn't even have this subsequent public hearing in the the subdivision ordinance, so we will after, if this is adopted. Um and then this is new too, just to comply with what we already did in the zoning code. We wanted to highlight that we do a lot of stuff by email. And so this is telling the applicant, hey, give us. With your application, where you want us, you know, the email address that you want us to send all of this required notice. And then I added high priority transportation corridors and standards and specifications in the subdivision ordinance. I didn't add the illuminated sign because it's not relevant in the subdivision ordinance. And uh, let's see. That's the same, the applicant notice and. These are just more changes in the subdivision code, so. With that, I'm just recommending these changes and I think it was a good exercise to to bring our subdivision code. Up to date and compliance with our our zoning code and um. So I just recommend those changes and, you know, the main discussion is whether you want to tackle the substantive change. In reducing some of our noticing timelines. And I think the city council would appreciate your recommendation on those. And this does require a public hearing.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah, I I'm actually really excited about this. This is something that I feel like moves us into the twenty first century. When it comes to the process here. You know, it'll certainly save the city money, uh which is awesome for for the city. Um and then, you you know, you you kind of call out the idea of by moving. From ten days to. Was five days, three days, right? We can potentially get it from the planning commission to the city council within, from one week to the next. And I think that's a, a good approach. You know, for one thing, if it's a, if it's a hot item, the the public probably has, you know, they're excited about it and. They can. If you wait too long, then the fire goes out. So. Uh and besides, the city council can always table things like they like to do, so. That's still their prerogative. Anyway, um anybody else have any thoughts, comments or questions for Lisa on? On these amendments?
Great job. I love these edits and it's a really awesome change. So, well done.
Yeah, well, um you did such a great job explaining it, Lisa, that really nobody has any questions, so. Um I'm guessing we do need a a motion to, what are we doing with this, Lisa? Are we recommending approval or what are we doing?
It's only a public hearing, she said.
Oh, we do need a public hearing. I'm sorry. I got so excited about it.
A a recommendation to the city council for approval.
Oh, okay. File that away for a minute. Um so this matter has been scheduled for a public hearing and we will, as we've done before. Um open this up for a public hearing and use the raise hand feature within Zoom. So if anybody has any, uh anybody from the public has any comments on this, go ahead and raise your hand. We'd love to hear from. Anyone. I'm sure there's lots of people that joined the meeting just for this. I'm sure there's lots of people that joined the meeting just for this. Great. I will, uh, let's see, let's turn the time over to Brendan Allen. Introduce yourself and we'd like to hear what you have to, to say about public noticing.
Yes, Brendan Allen, Centerville, Utah. I love the digitization of it. I'm not familiar with the state statutes that have been passed through the legislature. Um, I find the A-frames incredibly ineffective, especially in our current state. I haven't been outside for a drive in what feels like months. Um, it was like 30 minutes into this meeting that someone on our local community uh private Facebook page posted that there was a meeting this evening. If there could be amendment for at least training on how the community can uh subscribe to notices or where these are posted um within the Centerville website would be greatly appreciative. From that standpoint, there's a lot that we can, that I personally could do as a technologist um in how I can automate my retrieval of, of that. But if uh we're no longer going to have it in a newspaper, totally fine. Uh, I just appreciate more transparency into when things are at, uh, or when things are being held and what the kind of agenda items are without having to dig through um several clicks to download a PDF to then identify what is on the agenda and, and when, when the hearings would, will be. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good comment. All right, anybody else from the public that would like to raise their hand and provide some input? Seeing nobody else raise their hand, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, and just as a quick kind of response to Mr. Allen's comment, uh, from that Utah public notice website, there are ways to subscribe to uh notices on there for different uh cities and other entities and whatnot. But to that point, um, Lisa, Cory and actually even maybe Brandt, uh, who I see lurking. It might not be a bad idea to figure out some way, whether this is a newsletter item or something else within the city to, you know, remind the residents of the city, this is how we're going to communicate some of these changes to you. Go subscribe at the Utah Public Notice website or whatever else. And just kind of once a year or something, give the citizens a, a reminder about how we communicate.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the public input was, was excellent. And it's always nice to hear from our residents and how they um, you know, hear about the meetings and things like that. Uh, and, and I, I like your suggestion that, yeah, we, we get that information out and, and, you know, make sure that it's on our website and because it's great. I mean, once you subscribe, they just automatically send you the emails with the agenda. Um, and you know, we also have stuff on our website, but I'm not sure people go there either. It's much nicer if it just shows up in your email inbox. Um, so that's a great suggestion and uh we, we can work on that.
I know when I first started on the commission, I made the suggestion if we could somehow incorporate our social media into doing this, um, because I know a lot of people, I don't know, actually, I don't know the numbers, but I, but I assume that a lot of people um get information and news through social media. Um, and so I don't think that was, at the time, I didn't feel like we had the, someone said something, we didn't have like the, you know, staff ability to, to do something like that. But I'd still like to bring that up because I think that's a good, um, like in response to the public comment. I still think that would be a good way to, if we had on our Facebook page or something, if people follow that at least. I know they get, like I get updates from the police, the Centerville police of like high winds and stuff that I follow them. So if there was a way we could do that, I don't know.
So yeah, I'm happy to, to uh chime in on this. Uh, that's been one of my focuses for the last two years is updating our, our information, our communication with our residents. You've seen, we, we have a new website. That's the first step in making sure we have a website now that actually is, is easier for us to work. Our previous website, we had to go through channels and talk to specific people to get things added. And it was just, it was too cumbersome. So this way, we have actually trained seven employees to be able to get in there and make changes to this website. So departments actually are going to be have, have the ability to own their webpages, so to say. And I want to get more information out there to our residents. Uh, right now in the budget, I do have a part-time position going full-time with half of that time being de- dedicated to social media. I'm really one that likes to avoid a static website or social media. I want it to become more dynamic by a couple of things. One, recognizing our businesses in the city, any new businesses we get in, let's, let's spotlight them and encourage our residents to go shop those businesses. There's a number of things we have in the works. It's just the staff time. But uh with the budget, uh, hopefully it'll be passed with that position going full-time. That is going to be an emphasis of mine. So uh, the newsletter is, is great and we send it out once a quarter, but I'll be honest. You know, what, what is our penetration rate on our newsletter? Uh, really, it's, it's the, the website. I'll tell you, I, I do subscribe not only to Centerville City's Utah Public No- Notice website. I subscribe to about eight different cities in our area, so I know what's going on with even cities in our area. And I subscribe to these Facebook pages and they give me ideas of things we could be doing to our own. So that is, that is a goal, is to move in that direction.
Perfect. Thanks, Brand. That's good, uh, good input on that. So real-time feedback on public comments. That's, that's the way we like it. So. Okay, um, any other further comments or questions uh from the planning commission on on this item? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Do I need to be specific? There wasn't a set motion. Or do you want me to say motion to approve our amended newspaper noticing requirements?
Lisa?
A, a motion to recommend to the city council approval of ordinance number 2021-10.
Okay.
Regarding newspaper notice.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I will second Spencer's motion.
Okay, so we have, you, well, I heard, I, we heard what you said there, Spencer. That's good. It's Spencer's motion.
Yeah, yeah, it is my motion, technically.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion on the, on the motion? If not, we will start with Commissioner Shigru.
Um, I.
Commissioner Care.
I.
Commissioner Wilcox.
I.
Commissioner Wright.
I.
Commissioner Summer Hayes.
I.
Commissioner Hayman.
I.
And I am an I as well. Perfect. Thank you, everybody. All right, let's move along. We're getting there. We're we're almost there. Let's go to item, well, number six, I guess, on the agenda, land use training. Uh, we'll turn, turn over to Lisa again.
Okay, thanks. I still need permission to share. So I know it's getting late. Um, if you want to just give me a, how many minutes? I've got 10 plugged in, but I can, whatever you want. 10?
Yeah, 10's good. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, let's see. All right, and I've already started, so we're at 9:45. Um, okay, can everybody see that? All right, well, thank you. I'll, I'll try to go through these um quickly, but I do appreciate the planning commission working our way through the, the land use management code. And um today, we're going to talk about the general plan, um, which I think is, is good for some of our new members to know that uh we have a general plan, which is basically if, if our ordinances and regulations are a triangle, that the general plan is, is the bottom of that triangle and the base. And, and then in the zoning code really implements all of these policies, these general advisory policies that are in our general plan. So, and today we're traveling to Peru. This was the last trip before the pandemic. This was in the fall of 2019. So I was really glad that um we got out on a big trip. Um, and the Waywash region is a very high altitude in, in the uh Peruvian Andes. And it's uh like a 75 mile circuit around all of these very tall mountains. So. Okay, so um, the one thing that I do like is uh right here at the intent is that the purpose of the general plan is to present, to, for, to plan for present and future needs and for growth and development. And to me, I mean, they, they list a lot of other things, but, but that's the main purpose is to really, you know, think about the future and think about the way we want the city to look. And um I think the general plan, um, you know, we've talked about putting some money in the budget to update it because it is a very important document uh that we can use to really change the look uh of the city. And so hopefully we can prioritize that, but. Um, and then even here, we'll, we'll be hearing moderate income housing a lot in this section of the code. But even up here, they wanted to say right up front that um we have to plan for moderate income housing growth. Um, so this is a day one. Um, the one thing about the Waywash trek, it, it's kind of um not very well known and um it's all high altitude. So it takes place between uh 14,000 and 16,000 feet. So uh day one, this is what we woke up to. And I thought, oh my gosh, what, what did I get into? But um this was the only time it snowed. Luckily, uh, did rain and stuff like that, so. And um, I don't know, those might be the horses, but they actually had some llamas so to, to carry some stuff, which was quite quaint, I thought. Okay, so the, the general plan, the statute says that the planning commission has to weigh in um and make recommendations on the general plan. So again, the planning commission is prioritized when it comes to um, you know, creating ordinances and, and dealing with the general plan. And it's also says that the planning commission has to provide the notice. This is the notice of intent that Cory and I really like. We have to tell people that we're thinking about amending our general plan. And then we have to give notice when we're actually amending our general plan. I was kind of hoping that that one would be eliminated with the newspaper notice, but it's still there. And then the, the elements of a general plan, um, the first one is that you have to have a land use element. And there, there's, there's only three elements that are required. Land use, transportation, what do you think the third one is? Moderate income housing. Those are the three required elements for your general plan. Okay, so this is day two. And I just have to show this one. It's sort of, you know, lessons from the trail again, but you know, you have to be flexible. And this is Tom and he was from New Zealand. And he actually forgot his hiking boots on the bus. So they, they drop you off. This place is an eight mu- uh eight hour bus ride from Lima, north, kind of north and, and inland east. And uh, anyway, he forgot his boots and we're all thinking, okay, you're not going to be able to do this trip. And then a couple people said, well, I've got some tennis shoes and, you know, one was a size too small and one was a size too big. And I think today he's actually wearing the ones that are a size too small. And then he got a bunch of blisters and somebody else gave him another pair that was a little too big. But he did the whole 10-day trek in someone else's tennis shoes, so. But I think he was only 21, so you can do anything at that age. And then this is kind of the, the passes. We did seven passes. So each of these passes, we hike over here and then go down there. And all the mountains around us are about 21,000 feet, so it's, it was pretty spectacular. Okay, this one is just getting back to the elements. We have to have our transportation plan um and our moderate income housing plan. And this is the part of the code, you know, we've dealt with this and, and they've made a lot of amendments on the moderate income housing. And I don't know if it was a year or two ago, but state law actually said, look, you have to pick, you know, we're going to give you this laundry list of tools or, you know, ways to um address moderate income housing in your city and you have to pick three of those. And so we did that and Centerville, I've highlighted the ones we've picked. These are our three that um our moderate income housing uh shall, number one, we're going to create or allow for reduced regulations regarding accessory dwelling units. And this year, the state did um amend the accessory dwelling unit to uh make it a little easier. Well, some might say, and I know Cory's been working on some um amendments to our code regarding the ADUs. So he'll probably be, be bringing those up and, and I'm kind of excited because we can report, because now we have to report annually to the Department of Workforce Services on our, how we're doing on our moderate income housing every year in December. Cory and Mackenzie have to prepare a report and say, how are we doing? And so this year, if, if we do get to the accessory dwelling um ordinance, we can report that, that, that we've actually accomplished something. And I'll come back to that one, but I just want to get to the other two that we've picked. Um, Centerville has picked the next number two, that we're going to preserve existing moderate income housing. Meaning whatever moderate income housing we have, we will try to keep it that way or at least keep the zoning, um, which is kind of what we did with the Hive. Um, we kept the zoning um for what it was and, and the density there. And then also our third strategy that we've picked is any other program or str- strategy that we think will help with moderate income housing. We did give the council when we brought our recommendations for ordinance amendments on moderate income housing, a couple other choices. Um, but the council wanted to start uh conservatively with just the three because that's what the statute requires. We have to pick three. Um, and then if we decide we want to add another one later, we can, we can do that, so. Then just back to this, um, I just think this one, I put this one in because I don't know of any of you. This really looks like Tasmania. Remember the Tasmania trip and sort of this upland grassland? And so anyway, I thought it was kind of fun that you, sometimes you could just say, you know, someone puts you there and you wonder, well, where in the world am I? But anyway, it's very interesting, these, these upland grasses. And then you can kind of see some of the, the bigger mountain ranges. So. Okay, let's see. Oh, one more minute. Oh, this one, I couldn't even get the mountain in, but this was one of the lunch spots. Um, just spectacular scenery and there were just about eight of us in the, in the group. And uh that was our lunch spot. And you had the option to, I think we'd already been hiking like five hours and we had two more to go. And you had the option to do a side route um up sort of one of these, only to the right here. And um, three people in our group did it. And I, that's kind of my one regret is I just wasn't sure if I could make it and I didn't, I didn't do it. I opted for the two hours to camp, but that was my one disappointment. Um, these are optional elements and, and we do have some of these, you know, after this, if you want to get on our web, on the city website, our general plan is there. And we have a lot of different elements that we've chosen, you know, a foothills management plan, our annexation plan. Um, you know, some other items, our, our parks plan, things like that. And then they just go over the, the hearing requirements and I forgot to put the, the legislative amendments, but this has been amended on the noticing. There we go. Okay. Yeah, and sometimes there's not even a trail. You, you're just like walking up the side of the mountain, so. Let me just see if there's anything else important. Oh, this one, uh, we always talk about how general plans are, are usually just advisory documents. But um it does say here, the impact of which shall be determined by ordinance. And Centerville has said by ordinance on many things like zoning, um, maybe even conditional use permits, that it has to be consistent with the general plan. So in my opinion, that's why it is important to keep our general plan up to date because we look to it for um many of our everyday zoning decisions um that we'll make. So anyway, I'll just uh go to the end. So um, any questions? Because I, I really do think that the general plan is something that we'd like to focus on and um hopefully you can be part of that. I know um we're looking at this year or next year maybe to, to redo the general plan and update it. Um, I know, you know, and, and most of the time, I think Cory and, and Mackenzie do a good job of, of kind of cite. I know, you know, and, and most of the time, I think Cory and, and Mackenzie do a good job of, of kind of citing, citing, giving you the citation to the general plan. But maybe that's your homework to just familiarize yourself on our city website where the general plan is. And so sometimes if you want to look that up, it's there. Because we don't have the general plan on our municipal code site yet, just because that has so many pictures and different formatting. But. Any questions? Does anybody bend to Waywash? Did anybody even think that'd be the way you pronounce it? I don't know. It's.
That's incredible, Lisa. And those pictures are so beautiful.
No, yeah. Didn't get to see that one. See, this is, this is where we had lunch. So we had to go up and over the snow and down there. And then camp was, you know, like I said, another three hours away. I, I couldn't do that right now. I didn't exercise at all during 2020. I gave up for the pandemic. Okay, but any, any questions on the general plan?
Uh, no, that's good, Lisa. I think that, you know, the general plan is something that I don't think we talk about specifically very often. And it's good for us to remember that that's there. And maybe that's, maybe I should assign everybody on the commission some homework to go and review the general plan. At least be familiar with the different parts are. Be good. I know I should do that every once in a while. All right, Lisa, do you want to move on to the next item? Just slide right into it. Our conflict of interest methods training.
Yes, um, sorry, lost you guys. I just put this one on the agenda. We're doing so much training and I'm sure you're tired of hearing from me. So I just put this on the agenda to remind you to take a look at the email that I sent you. And we're going to take you on your honor that you'll kind of review that. I do think conflict of interests are, are very important to discuss. And I know we've had a few commissioners have to recuse themselves. So in the interim, for, for the new commissioners, if you ever have a question about ethics or conflicts of interest, just give me a call. We'll, we'll chat about it and, you know, talk about some of these items and the disclosure requirements. But you should have been given the, we do have an annual disclosure. We, hopefully, we give that to you when you start. And then annually thereafter, you have to fill one out. So for all the new commissioners, has everybody filled out their conflict of interest disclosure form?
Did you get one for this year?
Um, yeah, I, I know some people, may, maybe we didn't send them out to everybody in January. So maybe we'll, we'll just put that on our to-do list. We'll send it out to you and make sure we have those. It's not required to be signed every year, but we like to do that because that way you don't have to keep track. And, you know, because you're supposed to notify us of any additional interest. But I think doing it every January is a good, a good practice and, you know, any, any.
Which, which, which one, which is the one that has to be notarized?
Um, that, I think it is that one. And the reason we have it notarized is that occasionally some disclosure requirements say that it has to be an affidavit or something to the mayor. And so I added the notarization on the conflict of interest form so that it would qualify with some of those disclosure requirements under the statute. But I will say that during the pandemic, the, the notary issue has been a little problematic. And, you know, because, yeah, you do have to have people come in or they have to go to a bank. And we haven't, you know, looked into the, the digital attesting, but.
Well, maybe, maybe hopefully we'll meet in person soon and we can all get together. Somebody can bring their notary stamp and just kill seven birds with one stone. How about that?
That's true. That sounds like a good idea. So, and, and I also put it on the agenda. We have to report annually to our, our insurance Irma about this training. And sometimes the state auditor also reviews open meetings, training and other kinds of training. So I like, for the planning commission and the city council, I like to have it on our agenda. So if we search training or conflict of interest, you know, we can just go back and, and show to the auditor or the insurance that, that it was provided. So.
Thanks, Lisa. Does anybody have any questions for Lisa? Okay. All right, let's move along. We're coming down the home stretch now. Let's go to the Community Development Director's Report. City Council Report. Go ahead, Cory.
Just be real quick. We have a scheduled item. Unfortunately for the Randall family, the, the events in their family have led to the city acquiring Pork Randall's old place. And it is currently zoned residential medium. And they would like to rezone it to public facility medium and add it to eventually the master plan to the city hall park plan. And then we may have another application that might be available to you. So we need you for that meeting. We'll add, if the business items remain low as we planned, the final compilation of the parking for you just to, just to agree that that's what we're looking at and then come back with you some suggestions. And, and last but not least, I want to wish Becky personally a happy May 4th Star Wars Day. And may the fourth be with you always.
I love it. Yes, definitely. I get my second COVID shot on that day. So I'm pretty excited.
There you go.
I appreciate Cory. And I, I want everyone to know, I'd, I know I already said this, but Cory told me when I first joined the commission and has told me many times afterward, he said, you know, you gotta be the, the citizen planner. And I want that perspective. And that's okay if sometimes we, you know, don't always see eye to eye. But I want everyone to know that I so appreciate Cory and Lisa and staff always for their recommendations, the hard work that they do, the, the digging deep of all the things that they are required to do and undo by choice to make sure that we understand this better. So I rely heavily on you and appreciate you. So thank you.
And ditto not only to Becky, but to all of you. We appreciate you guys.
Shaylan, do we get you still one more month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my term expires May 19th.
Okay, okay. Duly noted.
All right. Okay, let's go ahead and kind of wrap things up almost with some minutes. We've got three pages of minutes. Let's go ahead and review those. One page at a time should be quick. Anybody have any recommended changes or comments on page one? Page two? Page three? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes unamended, as unamended.
From March 24th, I second that.
Thanks. All right, we'll do this one all together. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. And I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?